...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the May 6, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. It's nice to see so many people here, but we know you're all here for just about one reason. Okay, on the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, we have an appointment for full-time police officer, an appointment for an on-call firefighter, an appointment for a full-time firefighter/EMT, we have Tantascor Architectural Design Class Presentation, we have adult cannabis retail business introductions, the Caregiver/Patient Connection, 253 Organic, The Herb Company, Heal Incorporated, we have a, we're going to reopen the annual town meeting warrant, we have a few votes that we hadn't taken, we'll have a presentation for that from the Historical Commission and the Trails Committee, we will be closing the annual town meeting warrant, we have Matt Moselli here talking about the Five Leaves Project, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, Citizens Forum, then we will adjourn. So, any public service announcement, Priscilla?
No.
Mary? I just have one, we do have the schedule for the Memorial Day Parade to be held Monday, May 27th, sorry about that, it's on the website too, it will begin at 9:30, formation begins at the old fire station at the corner of Brookfield Road and Route 20. I do believe, though, there might be one mistake on this, if you go down to 1125, it says Parade returns to Town Common for final ceremony, we always go to the front here for the POW flag and everything, this goes back to when the town hall was being renovated and we couldn't use the front, so I think they need to clear that up.
Who puts that together?
The American Legion Post. Okay, that's all I have for public service announcements. Okay, Chief Ford? Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to introduce you to Melissa Bach, our newest candidate for the position of police officer here in the town of Sturbridge. I'm hopes that Melissa will be filling the position that was created when we established the school resource officer up at Tantascor, so vacancy was left within our regular ranks, so in the last hiring process, Melissa came out as one of the highest-scoring candidates. She comes to us as a former police officer at the University of Massachusetts at the Amherst Campus where she worked a little bit over a year there. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice from Westfield State University, she is full-time academy-trained and possesses all the necessary certifications, we've conducted an extensive background check on her, medical, physical, and psychological testing were complete successfully, and so it would be my recommendation to appoint to the position of police officer with first-year benefits and a salary rate of $28.16 per hour with an effective date of May 7, 2019, appointing Melissa to the position of police officer here in the town of Sturbridge.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No, I just find your resume very interesting, and I'm most interested in that semester at sea, and at some point, I need to talk to you about that because-
Absolutely.
-what an opportunity that had to have been to visit all those countries, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Chief, is there a mile limit on?
There is, and that'll be addressed within the short time of her employment, she'll be making the adjustment.
Moving. Okay, thank you, anything else from the board?
And the distance is 15 miles border-to-border as the cloak profile, that's how we've always done it, now the law is.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Someone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we appoint Melissa back to the position of police officer beginning May 7th at a salary rate of $28.16.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, congratulations.
I'd love to, thank you.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, is Chief Grasso here?
He's not, he's out this week, so both of his candidates, their full packages are in the packet, employment applications and background information, I've had a chance to meet both of these young men, and I would recommend them without reservation, all the background checks have been done, and one is currently a part-time firefighter for us now, the other one is a candidate.
Right, it wasn't too long ago, we appointed James Towns part-time, plus had James in third grade.
Along with everybody else.
Along with half the department down there.
Wasn't it, was his father the one that was?
Brian.
Brian, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions about either candidate, comments? Someone willing to make a motion then on Andrew Hool?
I'd make a motion that Andrew Hool is appointed, it's full-time, correct?
Yes.
Part-time?
On-call.
On-call firefighter?
Okay, effective?
May 7th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, now, James?
Make a motion to appoint James Towns as a full-time firefighter, effective May 7th.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, next, excuse me, next we have the Tantascor Architectural Design Class Presentation, would our town planner and the students come down, please?
Good evening, thank you for having us here this evening, so with me this evening are Mr. Vano from the Architectural Design Class at Tantascor, I'm sure he teaches many other things besides that, and we have Matthew Sweet and Stephanie Drew, and I began work with them about two years ago when the Board of Selectmen had asked Mr. Goman to consider options for the reuse of 8 Brookfield Road, we had been having the discussion, do we retain it, do we sell it, what should we do with it, and so they came into my inbox at a perfect time, and we have been working to analyze the space in the building, or they have been working to analyze space in the building, the kind of direction we gave them was that we would like them to look at an adaptive reuse plan that gave us as much office space as practical, an area for a small conference room, and that could also double as an area that if the recreation program was rained out, the recreation could be held in that building, and then we also asked for some area for some pop-up space, we were thinking about Kevin Filchak and maybe some economic development activities. So they really worked very hard over the past two years to come up with this plan, and I will turn it over to them to present to the board.
For this project, we have added to the front lobby a place for tourists to come in and find brochures.
Okay, Stephanie, excuse me, if you want to go over and use that mic, and then you can point to your display there.
So, for this, we, the lobby part, we have added this space right here where it has a reception desk for people to come in and ask questions about the town, find brochures about the town, whether there's antiques and all that stuff, places to eat, places to sleep, and all that stuff, and then we've also added many, a few office spaces which somewhat look like this, is just a representation of somewhat it would look like, we were going to also add like a vending machine, stuff like that for the people who would come in, so they would have some comfort while sitting and waiting.
Each office could easily fit about two desks, and conference room, the conference room could fit like a very, pretty large table in it.
About 15 seats.
And then we also have the break room in the back, so that the people can go on break and eat privately.
Also, we added, we were going to make the ceiling a little bit higher because I'm short, and the ceilings were very low for me, so we were going to plan on having the ceiling at least raised a bit, having the floors fixed up and put into wood, so the hallways in the front are all wooded floors, and the bathroom and break room are tile, but each office space is carpeted, and we went for somewhat of a more modern look to this building to represent some of the way that these buildings look now, to keep that in the thing, anything else?
We have two storage rooms, and then there are two single-person bathrooms and a handicap bathroom.
Was there any disagreement over the paint colors?
A little bit. We just kind of tried to go some more modern colors.
Looks good, any questions or comments from the board?
I love the prices, all of that for $18,000, they're used to seeing a lot more money than that.
By the time we get around to it, though, it'll change.
$118.
So, are you both seniors now?
Yes.
Because you said you studied in the middle of junior year, any ideas on pursuing architectural design after graduation?
Me personally, no, but if what I want to go for doesn't work out, I plan to at least try to go for this, because I do enjoy it, but it's just not something that-
No, I mean, I was just wondering, you did such a good job and took a while.
You did most of the building, I just kind of gave my idea of most of it.
What about you, any plans on pursuing?
Yeah, I'm planning on majoring in architecture once I go into college, and then from there, either getting a job right out of college, or going for my masters, depending on what seems like a better option.
Well, good luck to you both.
Thank you.
You graduated pretty soon, huh?
Yeah.
Second?
Jean, second.
What was the extent of the water damage in the building? I know you commented about it, yeah.
Quite a bit, you could smell it when you walked into the building, it was just very-
Kind of hit you in the face.
Musty and moldy.
And the rugs were all like, that stained from the wall damage, and the walls did too.
Very good. Jean, do you know if that damage was before or after they put in the rubber membrane roof?
I'm not sure, we started this project last, last spring, really, right before school got out, and when we went in there, there was, it was pretty bad, so I'm not sure if it was after, before the membrane roof, I hope it was, I know it was so bad that we actually had to leave the building a couple of times to try to work in there, and we left the doors open, we did let the town administrator and the building inspector know at the time what we had found, so.
I didn't realize the building is as large as it is, because it accommodates quite a bed, three bathrooms, all those offices.
We also removed one of, I think it was one or two of the rooms in the front of it, because it was, it was kind of a small entrance space, so we just wanted to open it up more, and for the bathrooms, we kept the bathrooms where they were, but we just kind of enlarged them, because they were quite small, we also, for the bathroom over here for the break room, we also cut that down so it could be this space right here, so we can add more offices and stuff like that, and for the stairwell, we're still kind of debating on what we would do right here, because the door opens like towards the entrance of this, and it's, can't really move the stairs, so, still working on that, but other than that, that's pretty much what we have.
That's good, because it has been transformed a few times, from the fire station to the offices for the superintendent, and then to a dance studio, so, no, so this is very good. So we do have, if the board votes, certificates to present, certificate of appreciation, this certificate is awarded to Stephanie Drew and Matthew Sweet, Tantascor Regional High School Architectural Design Class, in recognition of the completion of an adaptive reuse plan for 8 Brookfield Road, the town of Sturbridge thanks you for your hard work, and we also wish you luck.
Thank you.
Do you know where you're both going to school? Or work England? I don't want to put you on the spot in front of everybody, I just figured with graduation imminent, that you would go at this point, that's-
For college, I'm not really planning on going to college, I'm planning on just going to like the Western Art Museum to increase my art skills, because I always want to go into tattooing or children's illustration for books, and it's a lot cheaper as well.
And I'm planning on going to Keene State.
Don't worry, you can always change, I mean, my four children went to school for one thing, and they're all doing something else, like millions of kids, there's a whole world out there.
That's true.
Yes, I'm a former dental assistant, was my first career.
Really?
Yes.
Well, in a way, you pull teeth now.
I do, I do.
Did you want to say anything?
I know we focused on the students, but I'm sure they had good guidance.
Very professional, very, they spent a lot to come up with the design in the private sector, so.
Okay, here you go. Congratulations, good luck.
Nice job. Nice job.
And Jean, thank you for working with them.
My pleasure.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have discussion on and presentation on adult-use retail business, businesses, okay, first up, we'll have the Caregiver/Patient Connection.
I will, yes, I don't know if this is working, but I think-
It's basically for the people at home in the tape recording, because we can hear fine in here.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chairman, thank you for the opportunity for me to be here and introduce to you a company that wants to partner with the town of Sturbridge, I gave you a binder earlier, I hope, did you all get your binder? Most of what the company is about is in the binder, that's where the people are. What's your name, sir? Oh, sorry.
I forgot, even after I asked him, I forgot.
At my age, I forgot it. Bob George, attorney for the petitioner, I'm not going to stay up here long, basically, these people here, these are the principals of the company, we put this binder together to tell you who they are, what they want to do for the town, and I think you'd be well advised to join in the partnership with them. I'm going to introduce the first principal, which is Catherine Tifolo, and she's going to start off and give you our presentation, any questions you have, we're here to answer, we're going to leave a question and answer section afterwards, so whatever's on your mind, let us know, we'll be here to hear you, thank you.
Okay, thank you both.
Hello, hi, my name is Catherine Tifolo, and I'm the president of the Caregiver/Patient Connection, just a brief introduction, Michael Stady, my partner, Dean I. D'Elie, who's my husband and my partner, which is sometimes kind of interesting, and this is Ron Lequere, who's the director of security for CPC, I wanted to thank you for inviting us here to speak with you tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes just to let you know what you're not going to find in this packet, so this is going to, the packet that Bob gave you is really going to give you an overview of our company, you know, where we are so far in permitting, the bios of principals, I wanted to just take a step back and give you a story as to how and why we got here, why we're here tonight, so Dean and I started this company back in 2016, when we applied for a license under the Department of Public Health, the reason that we started this is because of our son, one of our sons, our oldest son has Tourette's Syndrome, and I'm sure that many of you know what that is, it's involuntary movements and vocal tics that, you know, really kind of come to a head when you're a teenager, which, as you can imagine, as a teenager is probably just completely terrible when everybody's looking at you, and you certainly don't want to be known for that, you know, the kid with Tourette's, so the tough thing about Tourette's, or one of the tough things about Tourette's, is that there's no cure, and that there really isn't any direct medication that you can use for Tourette's, no one-size-fits-all, here, take this pill, and this will help, so we tried a little bit of everything, we tried the holistic path, where we tried acupuncture, we tried energy healing, we tried hypnosis, we tried meditation, and that really didn't help to alleviate his tics, so with the help of a neurologist, we were living in California at that time, and with the help of a neurologist, we, he was prescribed both a low blood pressure medication and an antipsychotic medication, which are obviously off-label uses for Tourette's, they're not designed to treat Tourette's, but because of the components of those drugs, they can help Tourette's, so his tics were diminished with those, but the poor kid couldn't function, he had a really hard time getting out of bed every day, it was, it was pretty devastating, so Dean and I, after lots of discussion and after lots of research and conversations with doctors, we tried, we decided to give medical cannabis a try, and it was, it was a really tough decision to make, because you're talking about your 15-year-old son, not a, not a path that a lot of people are going to, are going to take, but we did try it, we got his medical card, we gave him a tincture that was really heavy on CBD, which is supposed to have a lot of anti-inflammatory values, and it just had a little bit of THC, and what it did for that kid, I can't even explain, because it really diminished those tics, and it really allowed him to become a successful kid, you know, to be able to go out and not worry about what his body was doing and how it was betraying him in social situations, so we're really thankful that we did, that we did try that, we didn't take the decision lightly, and I would do it again in a minute, so that leads us to basically turning around and saying, hey, we're going, we're going to get licensed to do this, because we think that there is some value here, and our heart, I have to say, is really in this business. So we obtained our provisional certificate of registration from the Department of Public Health in January of 2018, and we also hold what's called priority status with the Cannabis Control Commission, and we got that last spring, we're a vertically-integrated company, which means that we have control over our cultivation, our manufacturing, and our retail locations, it is funny, because you may have seen this in The Globe recently, there's a lot of reporting going on about basically companies coming in and trying to buy up all these licenses in Massachusetts, because they think there's some real value there, and we have been approached by a few companies to buy our license, but those, their values and what we see for this company didn't line up, I mean, this has really become a personal, a personal effort for us, this business is kind of our heart and soul at this point, so we're, we're proud to be moving forward in this business without the aid of lobbyists, without the aid of politicians, or a large corporate backing, it's really just our team, and I have to say that we have, if I do say so myself, we have put together a really fabulous team, Michael Stady is one of our partners, and Rick Olsteen, who couldn't be here tonight, Michael and I actually grew up together in Barry, we both went to Quab and Regional High School, Mike and Rick joined us last summer, and they bring the finance and development experience to our team, and Ron Lequere, who is a retired, as of, what, a month ago?
March, yeah.
Veteran of the Pittsburgh Police Department, he's served that community for over 30 years, and he's our director of security, and we really feel like he's just bringing incredible things to the team, and I know that in the packet of information that Bob gave you, he has stressed that we all have local roots, Dean and I, married to each other, live in Barry, Massachusetts with our children, Michael Stady and I grew up together in Barry and attended Quab and Regional together, and have kept in touch, I was a, I'm a retired attorney, and I worked for his company for years, and Dean and Michael have done other projects together, and Ron is, lives in Westminster, so we're all local people, and I think that that's really important, because I think that your decision to grant a host-community agreement, I think that there has to be a lot of trust in the people with whom you're working, and there have to be people that are going to be accountable to the board and to the town of Sturbridge, so with that, I'm going to let Ron talk to you a little bit about security and our vision for security with the company.
So, part of my responsibility as security director is to offer up a security plan to the communities, that plan has to satisfy the CCC regulations, and you folks know that, but a security plan is much more than just satisfying the CCC, if we're welcomed here in Sturbridge, this will be the fourth community that we've, we've set up business in, we've successfully provided security plans for Barry and the city of Pittsburgh, and we're about a week, week and a half away from setting up an approved security plan in the town of Framingham, and that takes a significant amount of effort and cooperation between our team and local boards, selectmen, planning boards, advisory teams, and department heads. It also takes cooperation with the community, part of our business plan is to reach out to not only abutters, but neighbors within line of sight from where our facilities are, we knock on doors, introduce ourselves, find out what their concerns are, listen to what they have to say, oftentimes educating them what the cannabis industry is about, and that if it's, if it's within our means, we address those issues. Part of the state's plan is we have to do community impact meetings, we've done three of those, obviously, and the other three communities that I just mentioned, all three ended successfully, it was, it was a very positive experience for us, wide variety of folks that show up at those impact meetings, neighbors, obviously, and abutters, but then people in the community, sometimes people that are just anti-cannabis and show up there, so it got a little contentious on occasion, but all three of those meetings ended in a positive fashion, handshakes, exchange of contact information, ensuring those folks from the community that we were going to, we were going to maintain open lines of communication. Part of our due diligence in the security plan for our first location, 214 Charlton Road, was to reach out to Chief Ford and, and ask him for his security concerns, the, he had, he had mentioned at first some traffic concerns, and it wasn't super specific, and then a follow-up meeting, we realized he had some significant traffic concerns over on Route 20, we reached out to the Department of Transportation and Mass Highway to see if we could resolve those issues for the chief and for us, and it just didn't seem like it was going to work out, which led us to the second location that we've, we're presenting tonight, is 201 Main Street, security-wise, 201 Main Street, a lot less concerns with vehicular and pedestrian traffic over there, traffic is slower now, or roadway, it's a 20-acre parcel, we don't plan on using the existing building, but plan on building a brand-new building, that gives us some flexibility security-wise to locate the new facility on that 20 acres where they're going to create a safe and secure area for vehicular and pedestrian traffic, and minimize the impact to the neighborhood. Another benefit to not using the existing building, building a brand-new building, is we have a clean canvas for a floor plan for what we want to do inside. Security-wise, that's a home run for us. We've got folks that have been doing research in the cannabis business for years. They have an idea what a, what a really good state-of-the-art retail location would be. Our plan there is to create that. A state-of-the-art retail location, a safe access for our customers, and safe inventory within the facility. Because it's brand-new, we can secure our vault and bring in new technologies and make sure that it's a safe and secure facility. Last thing, I don't want to take up too much time here. We had mentioned it at the previous meeting. As part of our security plan is to do an appointment-only process at the very beginning to minimize the vehicular and pedestrian traffic at that location. It'll give us control over folks and give us an idea what the interest is at the facility as interest starts to decline a little bit. And we, we believe that the roadway and the business can handle the regular business, and then we'll slowly wean ourselves from appointment-only to a full retail location. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dean Iandoli, and I'm here to just tell you a little bit about exactly where CPC, our company, stands as far as getting off the ground in operations. As Catherine mentioned, we were one of the first entities to receive an RMD license. She also mentioned that subsequently, we received priority status from the Cannabis Control Commission. That was basically their first week of operation. They recognized the early ones in, and they gave us the opportunity to apply. What priority status means is when we apply for a license, it jumps the line. It's, we've seen it work pretty effectively in the licenses we've already received from the CCC. So currently, the, with regard to, with regard to Sturbridge, you know, there's three, three things that I think are important, important. I mean, you have, you're going to have four very qualified candidates talk to you tonight. So what I can talk to you about is CPC. And one of the, one of the most important components of this is not only being able to open, but there's a, there's a growing problem in the cannabis industry in Massachusetts, and that is that there is a massive, massive undersupply of product. And most in the business don't foresee that changing for the next two to three years. There's nine, nine million square feet of canopy space that they say are going to be needed to meet the market. Right now, there's a million. And as we know by sitting here, licensing these facilities isn't really easy and it's timely. So to that, in Pittsburgh, we've already received permission to build in Pittsburgh. We have a retail location there. We control it, we own the building. Cannabis Control Commission has our license, our license application, which they've reviewed, deemed complete. And the final step there is final review by the commission, probably over the next 21 days. More importantly, in Barry, we've already been approved for our cultivation facility. And we are actually under hard construction, and we anticipate completing construction in seven to 10 days. We've already received architectural approval, which is one process with the Cannabis Control Commission. After they issue you your initial provisional license, then you have to have architectural approval before they allow you to begin building. We've been approved, and currently, we have a final inspection date for that cultivation facility on May 28th. After the 28th, that will be sent to the commission for final licensure, and that happens on the 13th. And if we are lucky enough to receive that license on the 15th, we'll become the first outdoor-growing cannabis facility in the state, and we will take seeds and put them in the ground. Subsequently, we're also constructing a high-tech hybrid greenhouse, where we'll then move indoors for the next three grows during the fall, winter, and early spring. I bring this up because, you know, as a company that is controlling our product from seed to sale, we're able to, you know, now optimistically open our retail locations sometime, probably in mid-September to late September when we harvest that first crop. Framingham, as Ron mentioned, we've received two HCAs from Mayor Spicer's office. We have a second 23,000-square-foot cultivation facility, which is in a building we control. And we also have a 5,000-square-foot manufacturing and production facility. That's where the other products are made, where things are extracted, and tinctures and topicals and ointments and edibles are all made. So we have two HCAs there, and we're just working through the final details there. So that brings me to Sturbridge. Why are we here in Sturbridge? I think, I think first and foremost is we've taken a very much central Massachusetts approach to this. You know, we, we all have local roots. We all are close here. We all live within this area. If you look on a map and you see Pittsburgh to the north of Worcester, you see Barry to the northwest of Worcester, you see Framingham to the east of Worcester. Sturbridge, for a lot of reasons, but geographically, it's, it's a fantastic location. Sturbridge also has constructed a really strong set of bylaws that are reasonable, but, you know, diligent. We found properties that are zoned for it, and, you know, we, we really feel that with our hands-on approach to our business, Sturbridge is easily reachable by any one of us at any time. And my family comes from a long history of retail, and they were, I can still remember my grandfather going around to his supermarkets in his suit and tie for, for years, just to touch them. So that's important to us. So we had two locations. The first one was 214 Charlton Road. Or is it like to refer to it as the former day spa? Sorry. You should have seen it the first day I walked in. So anyway, it, it, it was a great location for a lot of reasons. Fantastic visibility, you know, it's zoned for it, it's 11 acres. You know, we did environmentals, we're easily going to be able to accommodate, you know, doubling the parking. The high car count. But as Ron explained, it's our company protocol when we go into a town. You know, you, you start putting the pieces together, but once you find a location, then the next thing you do is you go to the chief. And you ask him what his concerns are, because he's the chief safety enforcement officer. And Chief Ford, you know, had legitimate concerns. Cars fly by that location. One of his, one of his main concerns was cars traveling east down Charlton Road and taking a left there. And, you know, I understood it, but one day I actually had to do it. And I tell you that I clenched for a few seconds, and we understood that. So we, you know, really committed to doing business in Sturbridge. We, we aggressively started looking at other locations. And what we came up with was another location, which is currently zoned for it, and that's 201 Main Street, which is 18 acres. Now, it's a large parcel of land. There's lots of benefits to it. Ron, I think, touched on most of it. Just for perspective, on that, on that location there, where we're proposing, and you have a map, where we're proposing to build the storefront is on the south, the complete south side. So it would almost be directly across the street from the parking lot of the plaza across the street, and it would have but the parking lot to Teddy, the Teddy G's Plaza. Like both Catherine and Ron said, we'll start with appointment only, and we think we can control it. We also, we said, given the timeline of what this will potentially take, and it probably not, you know, reasonably being expected to be open until maybe December or the beginning of next year, we'll have full product for our, for our location here. The other, the other part of this that's important, and this is something that you've probably seen over and over as you've read, read more, more about this in the newspaper, is banking. Banking is really difficult, and banking has posed a lot of problems. However, and this came in about two hours ago, Catherine has been working with Gardner Federal Credit Union, and they have what's called a Safe Harbor program, which would allow us to gain banking privileges. Michael and I and Catherine have met with the president of Gardner Federal Credit Union. Catherine did a lot of work on the Safe Harbor application. As you can imagine, it's about 100 pages long. We just received word today that it's been approved for final review, and they believe that will be approved for a bank account to operate over the next 30 days. So that's another important component that we do bring to this. Benefits, you know, you come into a community in this, in this business, you know, we're obviously talking about a community agreement. But we've made some, in other communities, we've made some, some gestures to the community that we thought were important. In Barry, it was easy because we lived there. As we went through this and negotiated our HCA, what, and this is, this is a cause that's very near to Catherine, is we're, we're going to purchase the Barry Senior Center through the Council on Aging, a transportation bus to help get rural seniors who are aging in place to the senior center. Catherine, for years, delivered meals on wheels and saw that, and that was important to us. In Pittsburgh, we're forming a committee made up of Pittsburgh residents and members of CPC that annually will get together and target a charitable organization or a cause that could use a donation, and then we're going to make an annual donation to that cause. Getting a license and then getting to the point where you're actually building and about to undergo final inspections, et cetera, it takes a lot, a lot of time, and it takes a lot of money. As Catherine said, Michael is, handles the finest part of this, and we're fully capitalized at this point. We've raised more than $6 million, and we've taken kind of our same approach. Obviously, there are, all of our investors are from Massachusetts. Some are larger than others, but we've also taken more, some mom-and-pop investors. And as I was writing this today, I realized that two of them are actually Sturbridge residents. So as far as why we're a good fit from Sturbridge, you know, Catherine, Catherine, I think, you know, really touched on it. We're, we're local, we're right up the road. I mean, I was, from Rice Square School, I probably did five or six field trips to the village, came out and took the wax paper on the, on the gravestones. So we're, we're prepared to make a full commitment to Sturbridge, and thank you.
Okay, I don't mean to interrupt, but have you been to the town plan or the planning board with the new?
Oh, not with the new.
Well, we did, we did briefly last Thursday. We met with, with Gene, who's been wonderful, and to Chief, with Chief Ford. We had really invested in 214, had plans done. But understanding the chief's concern, and we would never want to go into a community without the chief's endorsement, we switched gears very quickly and got 201 under contract. So we're still working on, on plans. Nothing's definitive yet as to set up there. But we're obviously going to take any recommendations that Gene has and Chief Ford very seriously, understanding as well that every applicant here is going to go through a site plan review and needs a special permit in order to get where we need to get to open. So we do have more work ahead of us on that because 214 just wasn't, wasn't going to work. And, you know, we, we tried, we went to the DOT, we really tried to make that location work. But again, without Chief Ford's endorsement, and he understands these roads and he understands that road, and, and we have to take what he says to heart.
It's a tough road.
It is a tough road, and it looks, it looks so good, but Dean's right, that, that traffic, and that would be an illegal left-hand turn.
Right, double yellow line.
The time, all the time, and we just can't have that. We can't, we can't create that.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we're at. Any other questions?
Questions from the board? Mary? No, no, go ahead, Mary.
All right, I noticed in the presentation, and also in the written presentation, you indicated that during this initial opening period, you will take appointments only, and you will have off-site satellite parking to kind of minimize the traffic buildup, because I know other communities have, that's been a real problem for the current residents. So I'm curious, what do you define as the initial opening period? I don't have any idea what you mean by that.
So if we, I guess if we go back to last year when Cultivate opened, and that circus, you know, was in the news every night. I mean, that took, that took a month before it started to at least, you know, quiet down a little bit. But since then, there's been, I think, nine other dispensaries that have opened. Some with appointment only, in Salem, they have an appointment-only system, and it's worked out really well.
And, excuse me, and Worcester opened last week with appointment only. And it's, it's interesting because you haven't really heard any issues, as has Gardner.
So to answer your question, I think if you had asked me this question six months ago, I might have said three months. I think now, we may be talking 30 days before you see it start to just, you know, regulate.
So if I can.
And I apologize if I'm not seeing this. Where is this other lot that you're going to have satellite transportation?
Sure.
That was, when we were working with 214, we had discussed doing a satellite parking situation. And I think that was really a distant second to, to appointment only. And the reason being, and Bob had brought this up, that if we were going to be on 214 on Charlton Road and having a bus go up and down, and actually, Gene had said this as well, there would be a concern as to people just saying, oh, we're just going to run across the street. That, that would create a dangerous situation. We did have ways to mitigate that so that that wouldn't happen, but I.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just, I just don't want to be confused. Are you still contemplating off-site parking for this other location?
I don't think we'll need it.
Okay, so that's no longer relevant?
No.
You're not going to be offering that? Okay. And then I just, I guess just one concern that I had as I was looking, it's all, you know, very professional. Because we're the fourth community, you feel you're capitalized, you don't feel that you're overextending given the size of the other facilities, cultivation, retail. Framingham's a very big city. And I'm just curious about, you feel sufficiently capitalized to handle Sturbridge as well?
Thank you, yes.
That's my.
Simply put, yes. We are very well capitalized. We have, we budgeted this into our, our models, and the money's fully committed.
What do you consider, so I know you said you raised $6 million?
Yep.
What do you think the different, how is that going to be divvied up between the different communities? What do you think Sturbridge is going to cost you in order to get this facility as you envisioned?
Sturbridge budget is around $900,000. Pittsburgh was around $600,000. I'm happy to provide, obviously, some of this is confidential, but I would be happy to provide you a breakdown of the capital structure in more detail. The full capital of 6.2 has been committed, and there are plenty of resources to raise additional capital if necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, Priscilla?
Mary got one of them. Good. Mary asked one of my questions.
Chase?
Can you feel very comfortable being amicable, working with the towns and the boards and on safety and all those, you know?
I can say unequivocally, yes.
Okay.
My company has developed extensively throughout the state, and our first policy has been always to meet with the town, as Gene and Chief Ford will say, and accommodate their concerns first. Done that here in Sturbridge already. We've done that literally dozens and dozens and maybe hundreds of projects in Massachusetts. And we will certainly do that in this town if we're so lucky to get a HCA.
Great, cool, thank you.
Priscilla?
Yeah, actually, I do have one. How do you handle, or how do you mitigate the impact on residential roads?
So our traffic study we had done for Route 20 really only showed a 1% increase in traffic during that time.
Yeah, but your new location.
The new location, again, is driven by population and the size of the store. The size of the store is going to be about 2,500 square feet. We estimate 200 to 250 customers a day, spread out over a 10-hour timeframe. So that's only about 25 customers a day. Your gas stations, Dunkin' Donuts, many other uses generate exceptionally more traffic than that, so.
Can you just repeat yourself again in terms of the anticipated customer?
About 250 customers a day, once stabilized. During the initial period where we're appointment-only, we can fit, allocate 30 to 35 customers an hour based on industry standards of average time in the store and et cetera, but.
Where do you anticipate your customers coming from? Like what, where this location is, where are you anticipating it coming from?
You know, the, the numbers that you model off are, is about 22% of the population will, are cannabis users. So you look at the local populations in the Sturbridge, obviously, surrounding towns, and they make assumptions as to how many customers you'll have, average usage. So primarily, you'll get customers from the surrounding areas. Initially, you'll get customers from a little further away because, you know, we're going to be the closest store to.
Connecticut.
Connecticut, for sure, for a period of time. For, you know, some of the towns to the north, but Lester's not far away. So there's more and more stores opening every day. By the time we open, there'll probably be 30 or 40 stores in Massachusetts open. So we're still a ways out.
And the reason I'm asking is that the area that it's going in has already had high-impact travel on the residential road. And a couple of those roads actually, that would come from Connecticut, have already, are already overburdened. And so my question now is, like, when you, like, when any of the new stores open, there's always an influx of people. It's new, it's time to check it out. So do you have some kind of a plan as to how you're going to help the residential road not be overwhelmed?
So, well, we had done a traffic study for the Charlton Road site.
Yeah, but this is very different.
We haven't done that, but that'll be part of our special permit process with the planning board and working with the chief. I mean, I can't answer that directly right now, but we certainly will address that.
Can I just?
Mary?
I'm sorry, are you?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, so this two-page description and overview, this was really Charlton Road. You don't have a two-page description overview for Main Street?
You don't have a two-page description overview for Main Street, correct?
We will follow up with one.
No, I just, I just want to make sure, so, because you talk about 10 parking spaces, three additional minor modifications. This is all not relevant anymore.
We had sent, and I apologize for that, but we had sent the packet out before our final.
Oh, no, that's okay, I just want to make sure, because I was going to ask questions that related to the minor site modifications to get 22 parking spaces, but I realized this is all tailored to Charlton Road.
The Main Street site is showing 40 spots right now.
But it would be nice to have something in writing similar to what you did for Charlton Road.
We'll, we'll follow up with the packet.
Well, we will, I mean, we're not going to make a decision this evening.
No, I know, but even in terms of, I don't want to trust my notes because you were, I'm a fast talker too, but you were talking so quickly that I really couldn't keep up, but if we had a written summary like you did for Charlton Road.
Absolutely, we'll get that to you this week.
Yeah, because it's a very good presentation, so, you know, I expect the next one to be as good. Plus, we need input from the town planner.
Thank you.
Now, I noticed you indicated that you were going to focus on mature, your consumer base was 38 and older, I'm just curious.
That's actually the fastest-growing market in this industry, believe it or not. And there's, there's, on the top end of it, 70-plus is actually growing exponentially pretty good.
And if I could just add, you think about it, sleep tinctures, I mean, it's without, and I have her permission to say this, but my mother-in-law, Dean's mom, uses sleep tinctures and just thinks that it's the best thing in the world. So, I think that that's a market that is really opening.
So, now Worcester County knows my mom's a pothead.
She's given us permission, she's, she's given us permission to say this, I wouldn't speak without her permission.
Oh, no, I mean, that's all up to you. What kind of edibles are you going to retail at this point? Do you have an idea of that?
Nothing that's perishable. You know, we have, we have some skew lines that we're looking at and they would probably be lozenges, mints, that we're restricted by, you know, THC levels in each one, it's five milligrams, so it's a very low dosage. You know, there'd be gummy bears, which you see, but once again, the Cannabis Control Commission has very, very strict and detailed regulations on them not, first of all, they have to be approved, but they can't look like any type of candy.
Candy, but how does a gummy not look like candy? I, I don't know, I'm just.
They're like cubes.
Yeah, yeah, they're like cubes. They don't look like bears.
No.
Or fish. They look like cubes.
And the packaging is very strict, yeah.
And it's, it's allowed by the Cannabis Control Commission.
Can I, are you done? I want to follow up on Mary. What her question was about how you're going to distinguish gummy bears or whatever, is the packaging going to be anything? Because we have a strict bylaw that nothing appeals to children.
Yeah, and the Cannabis Control Commission, it's 930, it's, I think 935-500-105, like four, I want to say, has about six pages with regard to packaging. First of all, they have to be pre-approved, they have to be childproof. I don't know if you've had a chance to purchase a product from a dispensary in Massachusetts, but these cardboard boxes, sometimes I actually have to pull out a steak knife to try to open it up because I can't figure it out, so.
And some of them have had it in their windows, attractive to children and that was, this is our biggest concern. I know we've had this discussion before. And we have put that bylaw in place for, for a reason that this doesn't happen. I know your market is 38, your goal is 38, but I'm sure you're not going to throw out a 22-year-old.
No, of course we won't.
Exactly, so that's my point and you just don't want anything that will appear to a child. This is our biggest concern, has always been.
So, in the dispensary, the regulations require that no one from the outside can see any products that contain cannabis. So, that means there's frosted windows, you can't come up and peer inside.
Another nice thing about the site on Main Street is that it's standalone, it's about 10 feet below grade, so you have to know it's there, you have to be intending to go there, children, families aren't going to wander by, look in the windows, they're not, it's not part of another attached tenants next door. So, that privacy gives us more security and protection for children too.
Anything else from the board? Just one more thing. So, the Barry-Fitchburg-Framingham, I was trying to take notes, but has any of them actually opened for retail at this point?
So, Barry's cultivation.
Cultivation only?
Cultivation only. We're, we're in the last seven days of, yeah, we're in our last seven days of construction, so we have our final inspection scheduled for May 28th. If that goes well, knock on wood, the commission meets on the 13th of June to vote on it.
Okay, do you have anything open for retail at this point?
Nope, the next one will be Fitchburg, which is under construction.
It's under construction.
Open in July.
July of this year.
Our goal.
All right, thank you.
And you want to sell all aspects of recreational, edibles, topicals?
Yeah, except perishables. Perishables, I don't think will be on our menu.
Yeah, okay.
Certainly, lines of sleep tinctures, pet products.
Horse, horse products.
Horse products.
Okay, do you have anything else for us? Any questions?
Too much time as it is, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Looking forward to the next report.
Madam Chairman?
Bob?
We will as soon as possible get you that traffic study.
Yes.
And if you have any questions at all, I'm just on the road, just give me the questions and we'll be sure to answer them for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Take care. Okay, let's see. A lot of paper here. Okay, next on the agenda, we have 253 Organic.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. It shows, oh, that's right, with the firefighter. Okay, for the record and the audience at home, could you please all introduce yourself?
Christopher Galant.
Alan Shor, Chief Financial Officer.
Marshall Wagner, General Counsel.
Leah Olson, CEO.
Seth Rutherford, Director of Sales.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Who's presenting?
Hi. Good evening, my name is Seth Rutherford, I'm a partner at 253 Organic. Thank you for having us here this evening, we appreciate the opportunity to be considered to be a partner with the town and to be part of your local community. At 253, we're a group of successful entrepreneurs from all aspects of business who have come together as a dedicated, professional team. One, our one-of-a-kind team can and will successfully execute on our business model. We are a well-organized, well-managed, well-capitalized, and well-advised group of Massachusetts residents working hard to do our part in the responsible rollout of the Massachusetts cannabis industry.
If I might interject on the capitalization because that came up with the previous applicants, we have raised over $7 million and we are fully capitalized.
253 currently holds three provisional licenses for retail cultivation and manufacturing at our Montague facility. We entered into our host agreement on April 2nd, 2018, one of the first companies in the Commonwealth to receive a recreational host agreement. We were the second non-medical company in the Commonwealth to receive a provisional retail license. We were the first vertically-integrated, non-medical company to receive all three provisional licenses. We will be one of the first, if not the first, vertically-integrated recreational business to open its doors. We have a six-acre site in Montague with multiple buildings, including a retail store, cultivation facility, manufacturing lab, kosher kitchen, shipping, receiving, and an office building housing our headquarters. With a six-acre, with a six-acre campus, we have the ability to expand our production if and when needed and have the infrastructure in place to supply all of our future needs. We are a conservative company, operating with the utmost of due diligence and doing everything by the book. To that end, we felt it important to have in place our vertically-integrated infrastructure before we sought any additional retail locations. Now, we are ready, willing and able to expand in the Sturbridge the right way. This is a brand-new industry and we are vested for the long run. We will not make the mistakes that others have made and rush into this business simply due to income potential. Cannabis is a compliance business and proper staffing, design, policy, and procedures are critical to success. Rest assured, we're ready. We have a 3,000-square-foot retail store in Montague scheduled to open in June. We're going for our inspections from the town the week of May 20th. We should be able to have all our sign-offs and then it would be the CCC, we would be waiting for their inspections to open the doors. Attached to the retail store is our 30,000-square-foot cultivation and manufacturing facility, which will open in phases starting in July with the entire facility slated for completion in August, September timeframe. Thus, our product will be ready for sale by the end of 2019 or the very beginning of 2020. We will produce 300 pounds of flour per month, plus enough concentrates and edibles to supply our stores, in addition to selling wholesale. In August, we will start the renovation of a 7,000-square-foot warehouse on this property and expect to be finished by the 1st of 20, January 1st of 2020. This facility will produce at least an additional 100 pounds per month by July of 2020. Our Montague campus will produce enough product to supply our Montague and Sturbridge stores with the ability to supply a third store when the time comes. The term product encompasses all flour, edibles, and concentrates, basically everything you would expect to find in a fine, professional-run cannabis store. Since we are vertically-integrated, since we are a vertically-integrated company, doing everything from growing to manufacturing to sales, we are insulated from the ever-changing and unpredictable nature of the cannabis production, quality control, and whims of this developing industry. Our vertical model is a proven industry winner in how we guarantee constant and consistent high-quality products for our customers. We will not have to rely on supply contracts with other companies or be at their mercy as such supply contracts can, can and do fall apart all the time. We hope to start construction at 138 Main Street as soon as possible and have construction complete no later than January 1st of 2020. We will be pushing to coincide the opening of 138 Main Street with our cultivation manufacturing facility and feel we have ample time to do so. We will be doing all the, we will be doing all of the 138 Main Street construction ourselves, just as we did in our Montague facility. My partner, Chris Galant, who has been a general contractor on Antucket for 10 years, and I have been in construction our entire lives. By doing the general contracting ourselves, we can, we can and do fully ensure you a quality product built to our strictest specifications in a timely manner. Proving this point, we started our Montague facility in November of 2018 and we will have the retail store open in seven months and the warehouse open in 10 months from the start date. Our design professional, professionals estimated this multimillion-dollar construction project would take over a year to complete. We are on track to bring this project in under budget and way ahead of schedule.
I might add how atypical that is for this industry and it's because everyone you see here is extremely experienced in other lines of business and we know how to get things done and we are entirely dedicated to doing this the right way. So, as Chris takes his water, I want you to know, all of us are successful in our own businesses, all of us are local. I also, when I was a kid, did the grave rubbing in Sturbridge, but the point is, we.
I hope you don't think we're rude. We, we have that on the agenda this evening.
Discussion about grave rubbing.
Really?
It was really. It's funny you both mention it.
I thought they did it because of that.
I mean, it was like 50 years ago, but I mean, I was a kid, but, go ahead.
Thank you.
It was important to me when I was five or six.
We have a passion for the cannabis plant and our mission is to bring, is our, our mission is to bring to market quality and healthy products. As mentioned earlier, we want and are very able to assist in the responsible and professional rollout of the Massachusetts cannabis industry. Our business model is similar to a microbrewery. In fact, you can think of us at 253 as a microbrewery, providing a white-glove experience with top-notch products.
Get it, micro-brewery?
Yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna trademark that, by the way.
Our stores will be interactive and we go above and beyond so our customers will have an excellent experience. The excellence in experience starts when the customer approaches our stores and sees our manicured landscape and continues when her, she walks in to enjoy our top-notch customer service with the ambiance enhanced by the highest quality of interior design and craftsmanship. Chris personally crafts all of our interior build-outs and has had his work published in the Architectural Digest. You will see in the pictures we have submitted the stellar quality of Chris's work. Furthermore, I have been involved in the rehabilitation of wetlands of native grasslands throughout my 22 years of landscape experience on Antucket. In the packet we submitted, you will see we have designed an environmentally-friendly and responsible landscape that will use minimal natural resources, all while having tremendous beauty. There are additional pictures in your packet of our recently-finished Montague facility where we installed a landscape similar to that which we are proposing here. Education is by far the most important element for a successful rollout of cannabis. We take this very seriously and have implemented measures significantly above and beyond the Cannabis Control Commission's requirement. We also take diversion and substance abuse very seriously and our interior software will, interior software will ensure nobody can buy over their daily limit at any of our stores. Moreover, we will put, we will, we, we will put in an educational booklet in every bag. You will see in the packet we submitted, our draft educational booklet, which will be complete in short order. We understand most people, we understand most people who will be visiting our stores either have never used cannabis or have not used cannabis in a very long time. Cannabis is much more potent today than it was in the past, so it's very important to have a strong educational campaign, campaign in the, in, campaign. In addition, we will be providing a Sturbridge-specific educational booklet where items such as local substance abuse resources will be listed. In Montague, we have been working closely with the local schools to develop a Montague-specific educational booklet, dealing with issues and concerns of the community. We'll be reaching out to Sturbridge officials and schools to develop the same type of educational booklet for Sturbridge. In our host agreement with Montague, which is in your packet, we, we volunteered to provide 150 hours of community service and would hope to have the same arrangement with Sturbridge.
If I could again interject, I know you're concerned about children accessing marijuana. We're, we're local, all of us, and we all actually have children. So, I happen to have four teenagers and we, we get it. We don't want this trickling down to, to youth for, for the reason that we don't know the impact, frankly, on the development of, of brains at that point. So, we are very concerned about education. We have, we have teenagers ourselves. We understand and what we're doing with Montague would be a template for what, you know, God willing, we would be doing here. We don't want this in the hands of minors and we don't want to be part or parcel of that either.
We are proposing to use an appointment app at our 138 Main Street location and only fill 80% of our available appointments. We have a total of 38 code-compliant parking spots, eight of it, eight of which will be dedicated to our employees, six left open, and 24 available for our customers. With an average appointment time of 15 minutes per customer, we, we will be able to serve well over 1,000 customers daily. We plan on having 138 Main Street open for business by January 1st of 2020, when we estimate there will be 40 retail locations open in Massachusetts. Using very and perhaps too conservative estimated customer volume of 500 customers per day and our statistical analysis of volume based off the app and average purchase price per transaction, we expect to generate at least $500,000 per year of revenue for Sturbridge from a 3% excise tax. We will request and pay for the assistance from local law enforcement with traffic and security. We will need two officers, one officer stationed at the entrance and one at the exit point of our facility. When a customer drives in, when a customer drives in, a 253 employee will greet him or her with a smart tablet to verify the appointment in real time. If the driver has an appointment, he or she will be allowed to park. If not, he will, she, he or she will be handed a card with information on how to make an appointment. With the 20% of our parking spots left open, we will be able to ask an unannounced customer to pull into a parking spot, get, pull into a parking spot, giving us time and a place to explain we are an appointment-only store and not cause a traffic problem. At 253, security is the utmost importance. For security reasons, I am only able to talk tonight about limited aspects of our security plan. Troy Hackworth, who is here tonight with us from Hackworth Security, is our security professional. Troy has over 30 years of experience and has been involved with the design, installation, and ongoing maintenance of multiple cannabis facilities in Massachusetts. At all 253 locations, we have a 24/7 video monitoring service that will be in direct contact with law enforcement. Last week, Troy and myself and Chief Ford had an hour-long meeting on proposed security plan and measure. All customers will have their IDs checked twice for age and daily limits. All customers will have their IDs checked twice for age and daily limits by separate software systems, and customers paying with credit cards will be checked three times. We, and we will always reserve the right to refuse service to any customer who is disorderly or we feel impaired. At 253, we know you are only as good as your employee workforce, and that is why we strive to train all our employees to the best of our abilities. The Cannabis Control Commission will be introducing a responsible training vendor program this summer, but for now, companies are on their own. Therefore, 253 is contracting with SEEPOL Consulting, which is certified through the Colorado MED to perform Colorado's Responsible Vendor Training Program. The curriculum requirements between Colorado and Massachusetts are the same, and SEEPOL Consulting is applying to Massachusetts to do the Commonwealth's Responsible Vendor Training Program. In the packet we've submitted, you will find a detailed list of our training curriculum. I'd like to thank you for your time tonight and let you know, we really would appreciate very much the opportunity to build a strong relationship with the town of Sturbridge and the local community. We are not a multi-state medical company with interests in multiple states and owners that have no connection to local community or local stores. We are an owner-operated business, and all of us except Alan, who now lives in Massachusetts, have been Massachusetts residents our entire lives. We are completely vested in our business and the same faces and voices you see and hear tonight, you will see if you enter our stores or call us on the phone. You can be assured by choosing 253, you are choosing a local, responsible, and professional business that plans on being part of your community for many years to come. We will not let you down. In fact, we will exceed your expectations. Thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you. You did get the letter from our town planner on the concerns she had and other people had. Have you done anything to address particularly the packing, size of the packing spaces?
Yes, they, the 38 that I mentioned are code compliant in Sturbridge. The non-code compliant was, I think, 47 or 48. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about the additional information on traffic flow that's been provided to?
That's, yes, we, the app, we're using the app.
Okay.
And that's to deal with the traffic, and we have volunteered to leave 20% of our spaces open because I've, I reached out to our colleagues and other people that have used the app, and really, the only problem they've seen with it is the unannounced guests. And it's very hard to get the word out with the limited advertising that we have, so we will be getting unannounced guests, and that was our proactive approach to deal with it.
Board, Priscilla?
This app that you, that you're talking about, can you just be a little bit more specific what that app actually does?
Sure. The application is a, it's a software program, it's web-based, it's a monthly fee, and you can program it to only accept so many appointments during a certain period of time. And the consumer can have it on their smartphone or their computer. We have that information, and it's all real-time, so we can see exactly how the app is working. So once a certain number of spots fill, then that time slot becomes now unavailable, and it drops them down to another time slot. It's like getting an appointment for a doctor's office.
Does it also give them directions to your facility?
We can, yes.
On the app?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm gonna go again with the traffic situation. What are you doing or have done to keep it off the residential areas that are already overburdened?
Well, we've spoken with the, the police chief, and evidently, our location has already been a location that has had a lot of high-volume traffic because it was a fruit market company. But with the traffic control, as far as the police officers and the in-and-outs and the application, sort of the application they're using, which is only, you know, taking 20% off, we, again, we don't anticipate, we see a volume of people less than probably we just might have seen prior to this facility going vacant.
And the app is highly flexible, so if there is ever any problem with respect to transportation or the flow, then it is an extremely easy tweak to the app, and it can be changed almost in real time. It is amazing what you can do with this technology. I am just amazed. I would like to show you and introduce to you, really, what we're planning physically.
So this is our site plan. Mike, do you want to stand up? Talk a little about it, structural engineer that's developed it.
Mike, yeah, come on up and explain. He's a consummate professional.
Good evening. My name is Michael Chaffer from Humpley Associates. I'm the principal there. Yes, I am a structural engineer, meaning I do building design as well, but I'm also site civil engineer. So what I'm presenting to you tonight is the proposed conceptual site plan that we'd already sat down with the, not planning land division, right, with them, had great exchange of information back and forth. We proposed a couple of different options relative to the parking, and so based on some comments that we received, we're sticking with the code-compliant parking space requirements based on the sizes that were required. So what you have here in front of you today is supposed to, a culmination of, this is kind of the interior layout that we've already proposed for the interior of the building. I'm not sure if you have that in your package or not. I guess you do. So, and then out here is all our parking. The gray that you see is all the asphalt that is on the site and where all the parking will be. I will share with you that currently, practically, the entire site is asphalted, so we are removing a lot of asphalt already to try to be more compliant with stormwater control. So the current stormwater design for the parking that's there now is, probably more than likely exceeds what we would require based on the fact that we're removing a lot of asphalt already. The various colors that you see here on the outside, the gray is all the proposed landscaping that you also have in your packet, and that's pretty much it. So we've got some handicap spaces. This, again, this has all been kind of initially reviewed with the land division a little bit. We took in some of their recommendations. We added an island in the middle, for example, for some delineation and breaking up of the asphalt a little bit more. We have some lighting on the outside. One of the things that you will see is, the planning department will definitely see as we get further into the process, is some more details on the security measures that are required relative to lighting. The Cannabis Control Commission has some very strict guidelines that we have to abide with. We also have some lighting on the outside for the parking, but obviously, with any kind of development, you want to be very cognizant of pollution, light pollution control, especially with Main Street being adjacent to the property. I think one of the things I just want to add to was one of the questions about parking. As you're probably aware, this was a very, as we understand, a very popular grocer. It had a lot of traffic coming in and out, quite uncontrolled, as far as whenever somebody wanted to come into the grocery, they would come into the grocery. With the parking app that they have now, it's gonna be a lot better controlled, it's gonna be timed better, and it's only gonna be open certain hours in the day, not even at nighttime, if I'm correctly, right, correct? So it's gonna be very limited use and very controlled use throughout.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, I have one more. On your report here, it says that you expect, you're gonna request and pay for the assistance from local police for two officers. Is this every day that we're talking about?
Every day that we're open.
So to me, that means that we're gonna need two additional officers to put on the roads for Sturbridge, because if two are tied up at one facility...
Well, yeah, well, the chief would have to work that on...
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that's gonna create another issue, too, because if we have two officers tied to one facility, that takes them off, I would believe, takes them off our roads.
If it would be easier or better for the town, we could always hire private security. We thought maybe the town would feel more secure working with their own law enforcement.
And that may be, I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just saying that that's something that we, that our chief will also have to look at and see what impact this will have on his staff.
Either way, we'd be happy, and it's not, it's not mutual exclusive. There can be times when there is need to utilize or the chief would want to utilize his officers, and for the backfill space, we could have private contractors. So we would really defer, quite frankly, to the chief on that.
Thank you.
Does it, Mary?
Yeah. Reading over your presentation, am I correct in assuming that you are going to stay appointment-only or not? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it certainly sounds like, and then you're only gonna fill 80%, so you're not doing it for the initial opening. You contemplate staying appointment-only.
I found that interesting. Yeah, there's no transition period. This is appointment-only.
Okay, is that how it is in Montague as well?
Not in Montague, because it's a different facility, and so, no, but here, we think that it would be better for the community. So every community is unique, every community has different concerns, and we surmised from the discussion that was had with the chief that traffic is an issue, and not overutilizing residential roads and facilities was an issue. So it is for that reason, we think an app, an appointment-only, is more efficacious for you and your desires.
Yeah, because, I mean, this area is, let's just, I don't, I don't know a lot about the cannabis industry in terms of your customers, but if, you're almost gonna be relative neighbors if both licenses we go. And my, this is what I, this is why I put my hand up. There's a, what do you, there's a, going to be an apartment complex, affordable housing. You're literally going to be their next-door neighbor.
Wow.
And that, they're coming in later this evening to discuss the status of their project, but he did come in earlier, about a month or two ago, and they're moving forward with it. So I have these concerns that, you know, we've got two possible cannabis retail stores with 1,000 customers a day, and we're also going to have, on that very same roadway, an affordable housing unit with, I assume, a significant amount of children as well. So I'm, I'm kind of...
I assure you, we'll do our utmost to make sure there's no abuse of our protocols, and if we see something, we will deal with it immediately. Also, perhaps with this low-income housing, they're going to have a board of directors, or rather, a board of trustees. It'll be a tax-exempt, I assume. So maybe our board and their board can get together and create joint protocols, so everyone is literally and figuratively on the same page, and if we cooperate and collaborate, hopefully, there'll be no issues. And if there inevitably are, as there are in human discourse, we can come to a quick and speedy resolution.
I would think something like that to open up the channel of communication is going to be required.
We would.
Even spelled out in a host agreement because...
I would personally get involved in that.
Yeah, I already have a number of residents questioning how much traffic they're going to have with the affordable housing development, and of course, we don't know. I mean, I don't know how many, you know, two cars per unit. It's going to be, you know, a significant impact that we're not experiencing right now, and this is going to be, you know, an additional impact, so.
I don't know where our volume's gonna be either, because, as I said, we finally opened up, there's gonna be additional stores opening up all over the place, so, you know, that would be worst-case scenario, but it's, it's gonna be...
But perhaps, because we do intend to have security at the entrance and the egress, there can be a so-called positive externality. In other words, there will be security on-site, and that could have maybe a chilling effect if there's going to be any issues or any trouble, and they will be highly visible, be it officers from your community or private officers. So that might be of assistance with respect to security concerns and also traffic concerns, and a chilling effect to, for any potential other issues that might, that might arise.
If I could add one thing, our current Montague facility is next door to another low-income area property, and we had our first job fair this weekend, and one of the residents from the, that now lives next door to our Montague facility was very, she applied for a job, but she said, "I'm so happy you're here, because now we have an occupied building. We know we have security. We don't have squirrels and rats and whatever it is that tend to congregate around unoccupied properties." And so I think we would be a benefit to the, to the low-income housing next door, just like we are currently in Montague.
Okay. I do want to clarify, this apartment, it's affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
It's not low-income, it's affordable.
And my other question, I know we, I asked the capitalist, you know, capitalized question, and you kind of came offering that you've raised 7 million.
Well, over 7 million.
In excess of 7 million. How much do you plan on investing in Sturbridge in terms of getting that building where you want it to be?
CEO?
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me, could you use the mic, please, for the people at home?
Yeah, it's less than $200,000 because we already have a building on-site, so it's a lot of just tenant improvements and outside landscaping here.
And did you, is that building already under contract with you? You already signed your purchase and sale?
We have a lease.
Contingent upon obtaining a license, I presume?
Correct.
Yes. Chase?
I think one of the points I just want to re-stress again is that, both in Montague and in here, we're using an existing facility that had parking already there, that had traffic already there, so the net traffic impact should be less than if we were to build brand-new. And I think that's one of the models that we've really tried to go after, tried to renovate some existing buildings that have been vacant for extended period of time. The Montague building, for example, was very, very old.
10 years it was.
10 years, it was unoccupied, and we basically renovated the entire building and utilized all the features that were already there and improved on them. That's the exact same thing we're planning on doing here. We already have interior layouts already lined up and things like that to reutilize, to renovate the entire building. As you know, they probably get, they have coolers on the outside, they have refrigeration walls on the outside, that's all going to be renovated, taken down, and retrofitted to make it look more approachable, more feasible to live.
Chase?
And you're looking to sell all aspects of recreational marijuana?
Yes, I did want to mention something about that. We're going to have a full bakery, a commercial bakery. So we're going to be making all types of baked products perishable and also non-perishable, such as gummy. We just met with a chocolatier for chocolate, so this is going to be a very, very high-level commercial production. It is going to be kosher, which is a higher degree of cleanliness, perhaps, and I think that we intend to do everything in the edible arrangement in the area we can. We also intend to have CBD product as well. And from personal experience, if you put CB, if you ever have aches or pains, I'm telling you, the CBD product, it really works much better than Bengay or what have you. But we intend to have everything that you'd expect to see in a very high-class boutique-type of cannabis shop. This is exactly what we're going to be. We're going to distinguish ourself with respect to branding, because at a certain point, all industries become commoditized. We will not become commoditized, because we will be a brand name. 253 will be a brand name for excellence in service and in product along the full lines of what cannabis has to offer.
Regarding CBD, we have an arrangement with a company out of Texas, assuming that we can get the state to allow us, it provides high-level CBD to Harvard University and MIT for research, and they are one of the leaders, I guess, in the world as far as producing pure CBD, and if we're allowed to import it, we've already got an agreement with them that they would provide it to us, too.
Exclusively.
Exclusively, yeah.
Anything else from the board?
Excuse me?
Oh, I was wondering if the board had anything else. Do you have anything else or requests about?
We do. I would, I would like to just say a few things, if I may, though my colleague and partner, Chris did such an, Seth did such an excellent job, and Chris always does an excellent job. I do want to say a few things. First, I'd like you to see how much we care. 253 team, if you could just stand up to see how much of, I mean, we, we really have brought in force, all of us out here, so you could see that this is a very important endeavor to us. Many, many people, very capable and competent, will be coming towards you and asking for a host agreement. I think what distinguishes us above and beyond the competency is something that's less tangible, and that is passion and caring and intensity and commitment. And I can tell you, each of us on the ownership team have that, have that in spades, and it's how we've run our lives. Seth said we won't disappoint you. I assure you, we're the type of people that you'd want to do business with. We're charitable people, many of us are very religious people, we care about our community. We, we really are in this for the right reasons. All of us have a story as to how we got here and why, but trust me, I don't want to take up too much of your time, there are extraordinarily valid reasons. I also want you to know that you are invited with open arms to visit our Montague facility, see what we've created, talk to the town administrator. He, he wrote a letter supporting us. That is atypical. We are good neighbors, and we want to be, and we're really hopeful that you'll see us as a really good, positive addition to your community, and we really think... addition to your community. And we really thank you for the opportunity to present. So thank you.
Thank you. Offhand, we did get the letter and read it. How large a community is Montague?
Well, Montague is a bunch of townships. There's Turner's Falls, there's Montague, there's the very neighboring Amherst. So it really depends on how you define your terms. Turner's Fall is small, Montague is small, but if you put the five little townships together, it might equal or be substantively equivalent to a Sturbridge. But then when you add the college arena of Amherst, it's, it's multiples larger.
Okay, thank you. So we will be awaiting reports, responses on the questions and comments that were delivered to you by the town planner. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Safe travels.
Have a nice night.
Thanks, thank you.
Sun is still shining.
See, I haven't moved started about.
Okay.
Mary, after this goes to planning, there'll be public hearings with the Butters and all that kind of stuff, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have to have a, you know, the meetings, what do they call them? Impact meetings? Yeah.
Yeah, there's a site plan process.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Just double checking.
Yeah, they get public input. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Herb Company.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just before we get started, in your packet on the left-hand side, the presentation slides that I'll be going over are right behind the cover letter. And on the right-hand side are a couple appendix items, such as our business plan summary and our policies and procedures. So with that, hello, happy Monday. My name's Ashley Esper. I'm a part owner of the Herb Company. I'm here tonight with Debbie Crowley and Anne Marie Belair, my business partners.
Okay, I just need to interrupt for a minute.
Sure.
You're going to be recording?
No, I have to go.
Oh, okay.
Good to go.
Sorry about that.
No worries. So what is the Herb Company? The Herb Company is a 100% women-owned business. This is really important to us and the reason we started the company in the first place. There's an extreme lack of female leadership and executive positions in the cannabis industry. I can speak from experience. I've been in the marijuana industry since 2017 and I've seen on a national level and also at a state level, it's a rich white guy dominated industry. So we came together and we formed this team, the Herb Company, with that in mind. We really want to change the pace of what's happening in Massachusetts, particularly because it's on the forefront and really in the spotlight for the country as a whole. With that being said, being a woman-owned business used to give us priority status. It does not anymore after the co-mergence of the CCC and the DPH. However, it is still listed as a criterion item. If you look at the applications on the state website, along with veteran and other minority statuses. So above and beyond that, our entire business plan, and there's a summary provided right on the right side of your folder, is predicated on the fact that we are, are passionate about being owners and operators. So the people you see here tonight, myself, Debbie and Anne Marie, we're going to be the people that are in the dispensaries. If there's a problem, you're going to call us. We're going to come to these presentations. The blood, sweat and tears that went into the presentations, it's, it's us. And we feel like that goes a long way, particularly in a town like Sturbridge that really prioritizes and values small businesses. Our proposed location is at 55 Main Street. It's unit four. It's right in the middle of the Fiskale Plaza Mall. And because we're just seeking from the state, we will just be a retail marijuana establishment. We have a product arrangement or supply agreement with a company called Nature's Remedy. They operate a 50,000 square foot cultivation and product manufacturing facility in Lakeville, right off of 495 State of the R. I'll get to that in a later slide. So with that, just in the essence of time, we have full bios about who our company is and the business plan. Debbie Crowley, who's, who's to my left here, has significant experience in the industry on the East Coast, which is a really rare thing, especially because of the newness of the industry. Debbie has owned and operated since 2014, a cultivation, a processing and a retail marijuana business in Maine through the medical marijuana program there. So because we're not vertically integrated, meaning we don't have control over what we're growing and what we're packaging and supplying, Debbie's going to be an integral part of our team in sharing our quality control and what we put on the shelves and sell into the community. So we have our policies and procedures here for you tonight. It's in the back of the packet. And that details our entire quality control plan, if you're interested in reading more about that. Above and beyond that, the main medical marijuana industry, especially on the retail side, has helped Debbie to really become an expert in the product. And that's going to be very valuable. It was mentioned earlier tonight, a lot of the customers are going to be new or maybe haven't tried the product in a long time. And Debbie has the expertise. And as I said, we're going to be present in the dispensaries and really controlling and making sure we're hands-on in the operation. As for myself, I mentioned I entered the industry in 2017. Before that, I went to Bryant University. I got my master's in accounting there. I worked at Ernst &amp; Young for five weeks and I sat in a cube filling out tax returns. And I looked up and I said, I quit. This is not what I'm passionate about. I was interested in the marijuana industry because I have Crohn's disease. I've tried and failed almost every medication that they can prescribe to you with no relief. And I've been in the hospital countless times and I found medical marijuana to be one of the greatest things for pain management. So that's where my personal passion lies in it. So I was lucky enough to get my foot into the door at Nature's Remedy back in 2017. Since then, I've served as their director of retail operations and their chief marketing officer. So I've seen a lot of the business and how it operates, particularly as it relates to dispensary operations. So I've laid out the floor plans. I've designed the dispensaries, the product packaging. I've worked with compliance and local and state licensing. I've developed a 200-page training program, which the Herb Company will leverage for our employee training, above and beyond the responsible vendor training that's going to be enacted July 1st, I believe, by the CCC and community outreach programs as well. And then we have Anne Marie. Anne Marie is critical to what our entire mission is because she's owned and operated a small business, 100% women-owned in Massachusetts for over 20 years now. And she plays a huge role. As I'm sure you're aware, the planning and the licensing, the zoning process is a big part of what this, this process entails. And Anne Marie is critical in that. So if you flip to the next slide, this just shows our proposed location, 55 Main Street. The hours of operation are tentatively Monday through Saturday, 11 to 7. And on Sunday, at our land use meetings, it was recommended to us that we show a reduced schedule. So we're willing to do whatever the town would prefer in terms of we operate 12 to 5 on Sundays or we're closed on Sundays. In a town like Sturbridge, we're very aware of the quality of life that's established here. We don't want to disrupt that. We want to bolster it. And if that means we're closed on Sundays or we have a reduced schedule, then that's something we're more than willing to accommodate. One sec. Okay. So this is a preliminary floor, excuse me, site plan. This was just done on May 1st. It shows that we're the middle unit at the 55 Main Street development. We have retained an engineer and he's assured us that the final site plan will not have too many modifications to what you can see in front of you tonight. We have full-size copies that we left with Gene, one for the town and one for the board. Another item of feedback from our land use meeting was the traffic study. So we understand, especially in light of what's been going on in the state, how important this is to address. We had a comprehensive traffic study done and it showed that we are at our location in compliance with the Sturbridge zoning bylaws based on the current tenancy and the predicted traffic at our location. So just to summarize, and the entire traffic study is provided to you in your folder to review. During peak hours, it's projected that we'll take up less than 50% of the available parking spaces. There's 100 marked parking spaces available, 125 unmarked, I believe. And the study showed that we only need 88 as a plaza to accommodate our, our business and the other existing businesses. So if you skip to slide eight, this shows just the breakdown of the businesses that are there now and then accommodates the proposed marijuana dispensary, showing at 3,156 square feet that will need 16 additional spots. And this is highlighted again here, it exceeds the zoning bylaw by 14%. To further address traffic flow, we know the traffic study accounts, of course, for normal operations. Again, in our land use meeting, it was recommended that we operate at startup on an appointment, appointment-only basis. To address your concern, Mary, you brought up how, how long is the startup-only basis? What does that mean? It's tough to tell. I think that's something that we'd like to keep as an open discussion with the town and evaluate when we get to that point. When we do switch away from appointment only, we're more than willing to hire a security detail to control traffic or take whatever measures that are necessary to ensure that it's not an issue for the town. Moreover, from that, if you flip to the next page, this is a copy of our floor plan that was designed specifically for this space at 55 Main Street. I've laid out quite a few of these and I do have to say, this is a, it's a perfect space for it in terms of an existing building. We're able to accommodate several points of sale at our point-of-sale counter. The existing building right now does not have two entrances or two means of egress on the front. We are going to add one, even from an optics perspective, and this is my personal opinion too. It just, it feels safer to have one way in and one way out. We're going to have security at the door checking IDs and even just for means of traffic flow inside the dispensary to have the traffic, you go in through the first door, circle through the sales floor and exit a separate way. We just feel like that's an extra measure that we can take to ensure that traffic is moving as fast as possible. Security and anti-diversion. This is pretty cookie cutter when it comes to what the state requires. Of course, all of our packaging is CPSC certified. We have cameras throughout the entire facility. Our director of security, Mitch Suzanne, is here with us tonight. So we've retained a, a security firm to, to outline a detailed security plan for us. We met with Chief Ford last week to address any concerns that his department had. And we're going to continue to maintain that open line of communication, of course, moving forward. We think it's really important, again, to just be present in the community and make sure you, if there's a question or a concern, you can call us directly. And we're having regular meetings with town officials and town departments. And highlighted at the bottom, it was mentioned to us that we should have a Knox box and keys on-site per recommendation of the fire department. Slide 12 is a summary of our drug-free workplace policy. This is detailed to an ex, further extent in our policies and procedures, page 24. We understand this is an issue. We just wanted to bring it to your attention. Of course, no one working in the facility is allowed to be intoxicated in any form. That's means for dismissal, whether it be through drugs or alcohol. Slide 13, Nature's Remedy. So this is our product manufacturing partner. They have, as I mentioned, a 50,000 square foot facility located in Lakeville, Massachusetts. They cultivate and produce a full line of concentrates and edibles, which we'll be selling through our stores. I've, I saw this facility be built from day one and I can tell you, I've been in quite a few throughout the country. It is state of the art. It's one of the best I've seen and they operate it like you could produce clean ships in there. It's very, very safe, very secure. And we partnered with Nature's Remedy because they operate off the grid through a system called Tri-Generation. They're one of, I believe, maybe three or four on the entire East Coast that do this. They might even be the only one in Massachusetts. And what that means is they produce their heating, their cooling and their electricity completely off the grid. This aligns very closely with how we want to operate our dispensary business in terms of just doing everything we can possible to make those green, eco-friendly decisions. So as I mentioned, we will be selling a full line of products. We're very conscious of quality control because we're not vertically integrated. And again, that underlies everything we do. And Nature's Remedy would love to have the board or anyone from the town down to see their cultivation facility, just to get a better understanding of what goes on there and how they operate their business. Good neighbors in your community. So I mentioned it before, we're very aware of the quality of life that needs to be upheld in town. And moreover, from participating outside of our business, we went and we had a meeting with the other local business owners last week at Fiskale Mall. And we just said, this is who we are. This is what we're bringing to town. And we got to answer their questions. They answered some of ours regarding traffic and parking. And we really think that's important to be in the community, doing those things. Above and beyond that, we are going to give preferential hiring to local residents, pay a living wage starting at $16 an hour with full medical and dental benefits. We have an extreme emphasis on education. Each one of us feels this is so important and transfers throughout everything we do, whether it be in the community, holding outreach programs and just educational seminars with our customers. As I mentioned, I have ample education materials that are going to be available, not only in our store, but also online through our website and through training above and beyond what is required through the state. And I already touched on this, our focus on the environment, just extending off of what our product supplier will do. We're going to take all measures we can to be eco-friendly and green. So neighbor support. This slide just mentions that we had that meeting last week and discussed who we were as a business and any potential implications of increased traffic or parking at the Fiskale Plaza. We do have letters marked out in your, in your packet that just show from a few business owners that they're fully aware of what the business is that we're bringing to town and that they support us and don't think it will hinder their existing business operations or parking situation. In terms of projected revenues, we are predicting in our first full year of business to do $5 million in sales. This, 6% of that translates to $300,000 contributed to the town. In our second full year of, of sales, which would be 2021, we're predicting $7 million in revenue, which is $420,000 to the town. I think this is a pretty conservative estimate. So last slide, why us? This was brought up a few times earlier. We're fully funded and we're able to show proof of funds. Just to give you an idea, I said I've, I've built a, or laid out a few of these before. In an existing building, I'd say the cost is probably around $500,000. Just security alone is $50,000. So we have the means to get ourselves up and operational in terms of resources and capital. We're women-owned. This is why the, the company was founded in the first, in the first place. We think it's really important to be on the cutting edge of what Massachusetts is doing. And we think that will be a great thing for us to bring to Sturbridge, just in terms of being a leader in the industry and really setting ourselves apart. We're owners and operators. Like I said, we want to be good neighbors in your community and participate above and beyond how we contribute through our storefront. We're supported by our neighbors and we're excited to be a part of the community that they've built. And Sturbridge is our first dispensary location choice. We're ready to move full speed ahead with this location. It's prioritized for us. We're ready to go as soon as the town gives us the go-ahead to start this process. So with that, we'd love to answer any questions and thank you.
Okay, I only got one question, having only received the report this evening.
Sure.
Having time to go through. But in your traffic study, who did that for you? Or is it just your numbers?
Vanassian Associates.
Say that again.
Vanassian Associates. It's, it's actually printed out in your packet.
Yep, okay. Then I would have found it if I had it earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we apologize.
Board, Mary?
Are you, I know you said that this is your prime or only one. Are you looking at other towns as well? Are you looking to open up more than one?
We are, yes. Yep. So the state says we can have three retail licenses per company and we are looking to eventually meet that capacity.
And you have the investments to?
We do, yes.
Handle all of them?
Absolutely not an issue.
Um, it's like I had a question. Somebody else, I can't think of what it was. We're offhand.
I, I feel, yeah, I don't have the questions. We didn't see this. Yeah, yeah.
Chase?
So you're looking to start appointment only, then you're going to get away from that once you're settled in?
That would be ideal. I think, and it's tough to tell. As you know, it's a brand-new industry and Cultivate in Leicester was an outlier. Today, I believe, 13 or 14 are open. And The Globe actually just posted an article, published an article saying that traffic at Neta, which is arguably the best-known medical dispensary in the state, when they opened for adult use in Brookline, experienced increased traffic for just one day and then it went back to normal business operations. So by the time we're open, I really foresee the demand per store diminishing as their customers have more choices. But yes, to answer your question, appointment only and then just evaluate and, and see what's going on in the town.
And then you're looking to sell all aspects of recreational marijuana?
We are, yes. A full line of products. So flower, concentrates, edibles.
Yep.
Now, I'm just curious, because everybody has answered this question.
Sure.
How do you arrive at the amount of customers you think you're going to have a day on your business model? Because I noticed you said your projected dispensary traffic would be 264 vehicle trips on an average weekday. I know another applicant said 1,000. I'm, I'm curious as to how we arrive at these figures.
So internally, what we, what I typically do, what we typically do is we work backwards from our projected revenue. So if you say $7 million in sales and the average transaction price is $100, between $40 and $100, we're open eight hours a day. And the, based on the point of sale, it's all encompassed in that. So for the traffic study, and I believe it mentioned, I don't know honestly off the top of my head what it based the study and the numbers on, but it's, it's tough to tell, especially because. because Sturbridge is not Boston, and the traffic in those stores is going to be quite different. It's one of those situations where it's really tough for us to say and commit to a number until we get to that point. With that being said, I think this dispensary layout allows for eight points of sale, and that's going to be more than sufficient to cover the amount of traffic that we're projecting for this location.
Now, I know the three of you are all owners of the business. I know, in terms of talking about security, I know one applicant came forward with their security. Have you already hired somebody?
So, our Director of Security, Mitch Suzanne, is actually?
Oh, you are the Director of Security?
No, Mitch Suzanne, yes.
Oh, she's?
He's here tonight.
I didn't know. Okay. Oh, there is a male in the room.
It was for the effect, yeah.
Okay. So, you already have your security lined up as well?
Yes, absolutely, yep. And Mitch has worked with several dispensary operations in the state already and is very comfortable with what we're planning to do at the proposed location.
Anything else from the board? So, I imagine you'll be getting back to the town planner with all the concerns that she expressed in the letter to you.
Absolutely, yes. So, throughout the presentation, yeah, we tried to hit on all the points that were addressed. The big one was, we didn't have a traffic study, and the parking was a question. Whether or not our location was even viable based on the zoning bylaws, we've proved that that is not an issue. The other thing was to open, per recommendation of the town, on appointment-only. We're great with that as well. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
This is bigger than you. Okay, next we have Heal Incorporated.
She had their letters telling them from businesses. You won't get as much noise.
Didn't have time to read?
No, no, but, well, yeah, the other one gave us the summary of the wrong way in, too.
It's hard. Hi, how are you? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I think she thought you refused.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Brocker Adams, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Schlesinger and Book Finder in Newton, Mass. I'm here this evening on behalf of Heal, Inc., and I thank you for the opportunity to introduce or reintroduce Heal to Sturbridge and to request an adult-use host-community agreement on behalf of the company. With us this evening are Heal's founders, its CEO, Trish Voss, its CFO, Jim Bonacorsi, its COO, Alex Oliphant, and Gary Einsidler, its dispensary manager. Heal's founders, all of whom are longtime residents of Massachusetts, bring a variety of professional backgrounds to the company, including chemistry, IT, and financial management. Several of them own and operate small businesses. One of the founders served in the Marines, and another operated an independently-owned pharmacy for over 30 years. The founders have devoted themselves to developing Heal, a vertically-integrated cannabis company, for the past nearly four years. The CEO, Trish Voss, has been working full-time on this pursuit for the last several years. Heal has contracted with National Consulting Group Forefront Advisors for its state application as well as for the dispensary staffing and training. Forefront will be assisting in hiring the dispensary manager and department heads and providing those individuals with up to 60 hours of training. Forefront will also be training all of Heal's employees on best practices for both medicinal and adult-use dispensing. Forefront and Heal will collaborate on a robust customer education program with a focus on wellness. Forefront's manuals and education programs are the result of being industry leaders for over a decade in a variety of regulated markets. Heal has developed a portion of 660 Main Street as a medical marijuana dispensary, or an RMD. The location is within the Sturbridge Business Park, as one heads west towards Brimfield on Route 20, and the Economy Lodge is adjacent to the parcel to the west. Heal originally appeared before you, the Board of Selectmen, in 2016 in pursuit of a letter of non-opposition for its medical application to the Department of Public Health. That letter was granted, then rescinded, and then reinstated by the board subsequent to Heal's commitment to refrain from adult-use sales for a five-year period. Heal finalized this design of the site and building and received a special permit from the Planning Board in 2017 after working carefully with the Design Review Commission, Conservation Commission, the Police Department, the Planning Department on details of the operation and the site development. Heal also held a community meeting prior to appearing before the Planning Board and held a meeting with its business park neighbors at that time. Heal negotiated an HCA for medical operations with the board over the course of 2017 and 2018. That agreement includes annual payments to the town in the amount of $50,000, contains certain provisions requested by the Police Department, as well as a provision requiring notification to the town of the name and background check results of the person hired as onsite manager. That agreement also contains a provision that marijuana products sold at the dispensary are not to bear a reasonable resemblance to any product available for consumption as a commercially-available candy. Heal's building was constructed in 2018 and completed this past March. Extensive landscaping will be installed over the coming weeks in accordance with approved landscaping plan. The company is very pleased with how the building looks and is excited to commence medical sales at this location, hopefully later this year. I would note that the building was designed not as a focal building, but more as a subtle complement to the surrounding landscape, as a barn and a pasture, without any flashing lights or signage. The company's logo is simple and clean, and there will be no overt references to marijuana on the exterior of the building, nor will anyone be able to see into the interior of the building, either from the street or from the parking lot. In terms of the company's regulatory status, Heal has had provisional approvals in place from the DPH for its medical dispensaries in Sturbridge and Provincetown and its cultivation and processing facility in Warren for several years. As you may know, the medical marijuana program in Massachusetts is vertically-integrated, which means that companies must grow and process any products that they sell. So, as a result of this rule, Heal's operations in Sturbridge have been delayed due to the construction timetable of the Warren facility, which in turn has been significantly delayed by structural remediation that's been needed to the building. Heal hopes to begin construction in Warren later this month and just received its architectural review approval from the Cannabis Control Commission. It's estimated that the build-out will take six months. Therefore, the cultivation facility will be ready for occupancy by December 2019, and it will take an additional several months to produce marijuana to sell at Heal's facilities. In the meantime, Heal is seeking an adult-use license from the Cannabis Control Commission for its Provincetown locations. Turning back to the completed facility in Sturbridge, we did design the site to accommodate both medical and eventual adult-use patrons. Therefore, there are 27 onsite parking spaces. If necessary, we could look at expanding that, but when we presented to the Planning Board, they had actually asked us to decrease the parking and decrease the pavement on the site to the extent possible. The Sturbridge facility, as I said, is complete. It's awaiting furniture and landscaping. The facility features six point-of-sale stations, natural light thanks to the cupola and vaulted ceilings, and references such as the barn door to the exterior concept of a barn. The building was designed to be as energy-efficient as possible, contains restrooms for the patrons. The patrons will enter the dispensary from the parking lot, present their security or their IDs to security vestibules to have their credentials verified. They will employ an ID scanner that enables them to verify IDs from all 50 states, and then they will meet with patient specialists who will provide the level of care and consultation that's appropriate for the transaction. They would anticipate spending 15 minutes with a first-time customer, but if a repeat customer desires to place their order in advance and have that ready and waiting, that would be possible as well. We understand from speaking with the planner that Sturbridge is asking companies to utilize an online check-in system of some sort to control flow for the first initial weeks of its operation, and the company is open to doing that and would seek some flexibility, maybe, to work with the Police Department and the Planning Department as to the appropriate length of time for that procedure to be in place. We would expect to work with both of those departments during the opening of the medical facility to make things go as smoothly as possible. Products will be delivered to the premises in sealed containers into a receiving room at the back of the building. All products will leave the facility in a sealed bag, which is child-resistant and odor-free, and no noise or odor will emanate outside of the building. Security cameras will monitor the full perimeter of the site, and no loitering around the building would be permitted. Heal has engaged Net Watch USA, one of the leading providers of security in the cannabis space, to monitor all of its facilities. Prior to the construction of the dispensary, we had several meetings with Chief Ford to discuss camera placement, as well as Heal's security protocols, and we expect to continue to work with him as we get closer to opening. There will be at least nine exterior cameras and 28 interior cameras, and I say "least" because the Cannabis Control Commission sometimes does request additional cameras during its final inspection. In addition to the cameras, there are a number of other security elements, including glass break monitors on the windows, access controls on all back-of-the-house doors, and a secondary alarm system for redundancy purposes. One of the primary benefits Heal will bring to Sturbridge are jobs. Heal looks forward to building a team for its Sturbridge location. We anticipate hiring at least 15 employees on various shifts to start. Heal will be providing a competitive compensation package to its employees with hourly wages starting at $16 to $18 an hour, paid vacation, sick and holiday time, and participation in health and dental insurance plans. All employees will receive at least 40 hours of training before they start working at Heal, and as I said, its managers will receive 60 hours of training. There will also be at least eight hours of ongoing training every year for employees. So, in conclusion, we're requesting an HCA for adult-use sales. We can talk about the moratorium next, as I believe it's part of the subsequent agenda. We would anticipate that the agreement would contain a 3% revenue share for both adult-use and medical sales, and we would also assume that the other provisions regarding local hiring and appearance of edibles would carry over as well. We look forward to working with the board on this matter, and welcome any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions. You did answer one question I had on the medical, why the delay? Because it's been a while, so thank you on that. Board?
Mine was the same. Why it takes so long?
If the moratorium, well, we already had the other agreement about five years, so assuming that was lifted and you were one of the ones to get the license, do you anticipate opening the recreational facility at the same time you open the medical at the end of the year? What is the plan on that?
That's a great question. I think as a practical matter, given how long the Cannabis Control Commission is taking to process the adult-use licenses, it's unlikely that we get open before the end of the year. What do you think, Trish?
Would 90 days for review if you don't have any questions or hitches? Probably a month for them to come out and inspect, talk to them with the walkthrough in Warren, and then probably another month of back-and-forth with the state and then organization with the town. So, probably looking at five to six months.
End of the year at the earliest.
Yes, okay.
I mean, is it possible that recreational would open before your medical? I don't want to put words in your mouth and just...
No.
Because I know, did I take notes correctly? You said by just the end of this year, the medical facility is slated to open?
So, by the end of this year, the Warren facility will be finished. But then it's going to take some time to cultivate out there. So, I should note that we've actually applied to the Cannabis Control Commission for a waiver of the vertical integration requirement in the hopes that we might get the facility open sooner, wholesaling other medical providers' products, but...
Oh, and is Warren the one that's going to be supplying?
That's the cannabis.
Okay. So, we're looking at probably 2020 before the medical facility is going to open? Is that correct?
Correct. If we don't get the waiver from the CCC.
Okay.
Case?
I was answered, listening.
Still, or anything else?
And I'm sorry, and you already applied for the waiver? I'm just...
Yes.
Okay. And so, when do they give you their?
When?
You don't know?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's like three weeks, a month, two months?
We understand that there are several groups that have asked for this and that it's under consideration, so...
Several groups have asked for a waiver?
Or a waiver. Simply, I mean, I don't want to say simply, but it's a little ironic that there's this hefty requirement on the medical side that's not present on the adult-use side. So, we have heard that that may be changing down the road now that the Cannabis Control Commission's regulating both programs, but as we wait, we've requested that waiver.
Okay. I assume you've given this presentation to the town planner?
Yes, we've kept in touch with the town planner, yep.
Okay. Because, as I said earlier, that, you know, we'll be waiting for more input back from the town planner and Police Department in response to the initials concerns that they gave all the companies. Nothing else from the board on this one? Okay, thank you on this, but we do have a discussion on your five-year moratorium on recreational sales. And let the record show that the Telegram and Gazette is taping.
Great. Well, Heal is here because we heard that you were considering other proposals from other groups, and while it has always been our intention to honor that commitment that we made to you, as I understand it, your zoning ordinance requires you to approve up to two adult-use facilities in town, and there is a potential for a third facility where those two adult-use licenses to be awarded, and then two years later, Heal is able to convert to an adult-use facility. So, given the potential for three in a town that had expressed to us some concerns about adult use, we thought it would be good to open up a discussion as to whether you wanted to consider waiving that moratorium and awarding one of the two licenses to Heal.
Wood's thought on that? Priscilla?
I don't have any issue with that myself, because you have been here first, and you're right. I mean, we did put the five-year plan in place, not knowing where the law was at the time, because the law had not passed at that time. But I don't see that we should hold you hostage, if you will, and not give you an opportunity to apply as one of the retail. Personally, from my standpoint, I don't see any issue with that, allowing you to go to retail, since it's the law. Maybe it would have come to us anyways. If you didn't have the medical marijuana, you might have approached us anyway as a retailer. So, I don't have any, personally, I don't have any issue releasing that.
I'm open to releasing that. I'm open.
Yeah, well, I, and I was, you know, one of the ones that, as you know, didn't vote in favor of the letter of no opposition, and I kind of stayed fast with that. But the whole idea of the five-year moratorium was to see how they fared with the medical use and, you know, to transition from that into recreational, because the state passed, because it passed so quickly, quicker than we all thought, we didn't have the benefit of seeing how the medical facility would, you know, hold up. So, that was the reasoning behind it, but at this point, the reasoning's dead in the water anyway. In other words, we're holding you to a different standard. If we award it to the other two, we don't have any track record with them either. You know, that was the original intent of the board at the time, to make sure minors weren't getting the cannabis and that it was restricted to medical use only and the safety in place and the traffic, but we're not going to have the benefit of that anyway. So, now you're simply on equal footing with everybody else. So, I guess I really don't see a reason to hold them at this point and require them not to come forward for another three years or two years. I forget how many years we're in.
2021.
Right. Of course, you also don't have the benefit of, you know, had the medical facility open earlier, then you would have had a track record, which probably would have given you a leg up in terms of having, you know, knowing that the traffic wasn't too bad, that you had your safety in place, your compliance in place. So, you don't have the benefit of that, and we don't have the benefit of that either, but at the same time, you shouldn't have the flip. You shouldn't be hindered by the fact that you agreed to something and others are now standing in line quicker for recreational. So, I guess that's the long and... So, I guess that's the long and short of saying, I don't have a problem either.
Right, and you people were very agreeable to the moratorium when we suggested it. So, does somebody want to make a motion then to?
Well, before you do that, I would just say, no decisions need to be made this evening.
Right.
I think if there's a consensus that they should go ahead and submit something more substantial towards recreation, that's fine, but Jean and I talked this afternoon, I think what you probably should do at this point is not make any decisions, but schedule a special meeting just for this issue, not just for Heal, but the whole host community benefit arrangements, how many can you have with Heal in the mix, how many can you have?
That was going to be, I had some, I like have.
I have questions on that, but I just thought that, you know, this would just clear the way for them to proceed.
Well, I don't know if you want to do that yet, given the scope of the options.
I think at this point.
We could wait.
Let's do it all together when we, when we have a meeting.
I think the only discussion here is, as I hear it, is do we release them from the five-year restriction and allow them to be part of the mix?
But you have a host community agreement with them?
Yeah.
Which, I don't know if there's impacts on other elements if you take the moratorium off?
Yeah, we could alter the host agreement at this point. I mean, if we're going to waive one, that's why I would rather take the suggestion of town administrator and not act on it tonight, because if we modify that aspect of it, we may end up modifying other aspects of our host agreement too, which might be advantageous to the town.
Well, I don't mind waiting, but I'd like to wait. It looked pretty clear, cut and dry, but we can wait. It won't be that long.
We would recommend having the town council come out and talk about the ramifications of that, plus the overall scope and what a host community agreement with recreation would look like, and some of the concepts that they've explored, and we would prepare kind of a staff brief on each proposal. I think if you want to clear them to provide a proposal, I think that's fine for recreation, but I don't know about modifying the host community agreement that's in place at this point.
I think that's reasonable. It's reasonable, but I thought that's what we were going to be doing.
See, that's what I thought, too. I initially, when I, when we got this, my first reaction was, no, I don't want to release it, because you haven't started the medical yet, and you've been, we've been waiting so long, and it was to provide a service to the community, and why haven't we had that? However, tonight, when you said the problem was with your cultivation facility, well, that made sense, and so you filled in that gap, and I personally don't see the need to stop this. I mean, when you came to us, you did jump the hoops with us, because we gave the letter of condition, and we, then we kept changing, and you stayed with us. So, I mean, you did jump the hoops, in my book, you jumped them, and you agreed to the way we wanted, and you agreed to the restrictions on retail. So, I personally, I'm not going to change my mind whether it's today or next week, I still believe that it should be released.
Okay, but just play it safe, we'll wait.
Yeah, I mean, I'll go along with the flow for that, but.
We go on.
But, I mean, I do agree, I mean, we don't have to release the waiver and alter the host agreement tonight, but we can tell you to move forward with a more detailed proposal with respect to recreational. Is that what you're suggesting, Jeff?
Yes.
Great.
Okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was tough carrying a bunch of books around here.
Mary, may I ask a question?
Sure.
We can have a total of three, correct?
If Heal is held to their five-year moratorium, when that moratorium expires, they would be eligible to be the third.
Right. With Heal, it's Heal plus two?
No.
No, Jean.
But if we release Heal now, it could just be Heal and one other.
So, it's a total of two?
If Heal is one of the original two.
Okay.
If you keep Heal's moratorium on, when they come off moratorium, they'd be three.
Okay, so if we release Heal?
Then you can only, then you'll only be.
Okay, got it, thanks.
If they got chosen.
If they got chosen.
If they get chosen.
Jean, thank you.
You're welcome.
Still bright. You can do some planting. Okay, thank you, good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming, St. Travels, everybody. We haven't had a full house in a long time.
I know. Well, we haven't had controversial issues in a long time.
I don't think this is going to be controversial.
No, no, but I mean, we said we haven't had a full house.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I'm sorry about short certain your vote, but I think, we can live on the board, just don't tinker with the agreement right now.
Yeah, right, because we.
See, I didn't think it was taken away.
But if they want that, they can come up with a better agreement, like we might negotiate better terms than our original one, because we're waiving a requirement that we gave them.
Fair chance.
Oh, I don't know. And, well.
And now we got the tacos.
Really? I thought we already had.
Kidding me?
I have to go to the, excuse me.
Okay, we'll wait a minute till we'll, just call clears. Hey, Priscilla?
Everybody's in the back.
We're rolling.
We're rolling? Yeah, I saw that, Mary. I said, wow, she's going to go for 8:30.
That's right. So, we do need a motion to open the annual town meeting. So moved?
Second.
Okay, any discussion in favor? Okay, so the first article is Article Five, Grave Stone Restoration. See if the town will vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Fund historic fund balance the sum of $9,500 for restoration and repair of 15 to 20 historic gravestones in the town's North Cemetery and Old Burial Ground, or take any action relative thereto. Now, originally, it didn't have both cemeteries listed, wasn't that our question?
One of the questions was which cemetery, and the next question was what, where are they in the program of this process? Because you come, they, I guess it's been a multi-year request, I think you wanted kind of an understanding of what's the duration of the program, how many gravestones had they preserved, those kind of things.
Were you able to get any of that information?
We invited them here this evening to answer those questions.
Okay, fortunately, Bob Briere and Jim Fannin are here, and hopefully.
Okay, Barbara, can you introduce yourself for the record and the folks at home, please?
Barbara Search, I'm the Chair of the Historical Commission. Bob Briere is the one who submits the request for funds for the cemetery restoration, and Fannin and Lair are the ones who do the restoration, and Jim is here tonight, Jim Fannin is here tonight also. So, I'm going to turn it over to them.
Okay, Bob.
Bob Briere, we've been at this for over 15 years, and Fannin and Lair have always been recommended as being the top preservationists for graveyard repairs and taking care of the stones, repairing them, or cleaning them, or whatever the stones needed. They always start out by each fiscal year, preparing by doing inventory of this, which they've done, of both cemeteries, the Old Burial Ground and North Cemetery, and by doing that, they have some idea of what needs to be done, and they try to take the broken stones first, the dirtiest stones for cleaning first, and each year, they submit a proposal to the Community Preservation Committee for an appropriation, and we've kept, they've kept the price down, they could probably do more, but you're limited by the rules of the road, I guess, one way to put it, and so they keep it under $10,000. And each year, they choose the stones that need to be done, because they're the ones that are aware of, where the ones that are broken are, ones that need to be cleaned, and we've always left it up to them to choose the work that they're going to do, and it has been extraordinary to see the work that they do, and how our cemeteries have looked. When Jim Fannin repairs a stone, a lot goes into it. We have, unfortunately, this year, we had a tree fell by a tree company, and then when the tree fell, somehow or another, broke four stones, and I think there's a special budget that may be proposed for them to handle those four stones. My understanding is the tree company's insurance is going to pay the bill, and we've been waiting to find out who do they expect to do it. But if you have a broken stone, in this case, there's one stone that's got, was in five pieces, a couple of stones are in two pieces, and Jim Fannin is an expert by meticulously drilling two holes in the bottoms and in the tops, and using a pin that's probably four inches long, half inch in diameter, putting them together, and then they use an adhesive on the two pieces, and when they put it together, I defy anybody to go over and find out where the break was. So, for that reason, we've always gone with Fannin and Lair, the town has been very pleased with the work they do, and once again, we come before the board, we've already been to Community Preservation Committee, and they voted to appropriate this coming fiscal year.
Right, our question only was, the original article didn't have which cemetery, and we thought it was both. Do you have a number of how many stones have been done through the 15 years?
Do you know how many stones we've done, Jim?
We figured out the old, Jim Fannin, Old Burial Ground, and there were over 200.
Over 200 in the Old Burial Ground, and I think you can quadruple that easily in North Cemetery.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so we did make a motion to place, is there anyone willing to make a motion to support the article?
No, that's good, I'll just go along with that, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
That's good, I mean, 20 gravestones repaired for 9,500 is, I think, a good, reasonable price to pay for each.
Okay, and the next article is Article Eight, Community Preservation Committee Town Cemetery Signs, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund historic fund balance the sum of $1,000 for the construction and installation of two signs for the purpose of preserving historical gravestones, one at each of the entrances of the historical burial ground and North Cemetery, to deter rubbings or take any action relative thereto. Sponsors, the Community Preservation Committee, and we did get a lot of information from the Historical Commission. Has everyone had a chance to read it? And we are the cemetery commissioners, so it would be up to us to adopt policy these signs would go with, or to not adopt a policy. Because people before you, a lot of them do rubbings.
Right.
Depending on how we vote, poor third grader Burgess is going to be a little upset.
Well, can we, is there any way that you can do some kind of rubbing without the negative?
Yeah, we can actually, Oster Village actually has gravestones, and you can get those.
Right, you'd have to let the school know, because the students have always.
So, the school kids can still go and do the same thing, but not do it with the actual signs that they're doing it on there.
Right.
Because what everybody was talking about, not only the rubbing, what's happening, people are using oil to take the pictures, or makes it look better, shaving cream on it, and it gets back to a dog, and what he's doing here, the town's spending $10,000 a year to get stones that are starting to fade away, and one of the reasons that happens is people keep doing this, especially to the older ones.
Oh, yeah.
The older ones have the nicest designs.
No, they always do, I know, they always look for the first settler in Sturbridge, and they always look for different causes of death and everything, and family history, so.
So, I have a, I have a bit of a presentation if you have time to listen to it.
Well, I was just going to ask the board, I mean, the board's probably had time to read it.
And I think we can't find a way to get one, so school kids must do it, but I think there are also, like, one of the signs is, you know, people have dogs in there, and I think, I understand, everybody comes to the town, there are still people buried there.
Oh, no, I know, I know, and we do have a leash law, but some of the dogs are not on leashes, and people should be picking up, and people just don't bother, but a sign, do you have the exact wording for a sign you want?
We have a, in the PowerPoint, we have an example.
That's an example.
That is not etching stone.
Right, but it's the kind of things we wanted to put in there.
It's the kind of thing, yeah. We want to cover the issue with the dogs attaching things to the stones and the use of chemicals and powders, and people don't think of shaving cream maybe as chemicals or flour as being detrimental to the stones, but it all is, causes a chemical reaction that eats away at the stone in addition to the natural things that happen, the acid rain, the lichen and the mold, and all of that sort of thing. They did.
May I have some observations to that?
Yes, I'd like to introduce some of the people that are here that you might not know. This, at the far end is Bill Barnsley, he did the doc. He did the documentation for the Old Burial Ground. And he has his book there that he can talk about what is going on. It's something that's going on tonight. And Jim Fannin, who, as you know, is the actual restorer. Did you get the letter from Jim?
Yes.
That should have been on your seats.
No, we got it today.
Yeah.
Anyway, a couple of observations. I spent about fifteen months over in that cemetery, going from stone to stone, analyzing all the different stones to build the book. Because when I went through the town five years ago, I wanted to find out about the cemetery and the data was very incomplete. The best data I had was from the restoration crew and they had documentation in the library. It wasn't really user friendly, so we couldn't go in, pick up a book and, and see what's out there. In the course of my work out there, I had a lot of people come by to visit and they would ask me what I'm doing because I'm out there with a clipboard and a magnifying glass and I'm, I'm trying to figure what's going on. They'd come over and they're curious. And I had a number of people say, oh, you know, we've come by here, we've been coming here for years and years and years. We did rubbings, we were kids, it's our family stone over there, we clean it up, they blah, blah, blah. And it's the cleaning up that caused the problem. When you do a rubbing, one of the first things, if you're gonna do a rubbing, you wanna get a nice clean stone so you get a good, a good effect. So people clean the stones. And the people that clean them use scrub brushes or chemicals or, or putty knives or things that damage them. I would go around sometimes and they would say, oh, our family is so and so. And I know those stones, I can go out to the stones and I can look at some of those stones. And they're worn away blank because people have touched them. And, and not just touched them, they've, um, abraded the surface. And I can go, I could take you over right now to, there's some stones that have sunburst on them. Jim knows them better than I do. And, and one of them's beautiful. And another stone from exactly the same time, the same stone carver, same stone, you cannot read it because it's so faded away. And that was one that was cleaned by some family. When I look at what's going on, matter of fact, tomorrow night at the Public House, there's going to be a couple of authors doing a paranormal dinner. And when they're done with their paranormal dinner or about the paranormal stuff, they're gonna go up to room forty, which is apparently spooky. And then if they have nice weather, they're going into the old cemetery to, you know, wander around and check out these spooky stones in the old cemetery. My concerns are for the safety of the people and for the safety of the stones. Some of those things are so fragile, you bump them firmly, they're gonna snap. You don't need to hit them hard. Some are, especially the slate stones are delaminated. It doesn't take much for them just to fall apart. Delaminated means the, 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 the layers of the stone are starting to come apart and fall apart. So they're gonna be out there, maybe they had a cocktail or two, maybe they have shoes on that are appropriate or not are appropriate. It might not be dark, but you can't see those stones well in dark, especially the slate ones, but they're gonna be out there if there's nice weather. And we aren't doing anything to stop something that it should be posted and protected. But bringing it back to the, um, the rubbings, the first impulse is to clean the stones so you get a good rubbing. And most people clean them inappropriately and damage the stone. The damage might not show up immediately. Oil is something that shows immediately, but it's ten years down the road. I have, twenty years ago, a couple ladies.
Mary Barnes from Grover's Shire.
Mary Barnes in, in Grover's Shire did some inscriptions. And I'm out there with their paper and I can't read those stones. I know which stone it is, but they are worn away to nothing. Because in the intervening time, either the weather has gotten to the stones or people have used chemicals on them like shaving cream, not knowing that that's really, really bad. So they walk away thinking they haven't done any harm, but a year later, the stone's melting. So I would suggest that, um, and, and when they do, do the rubbings, they don't necessarily use the right kind of tape or adhesive that protects the stones, it can leave marks on it. Or they may lean too hard into it or lots of other things. Or they're using a stone they shouldn't even touch. Anything that's leaning, they shouldn't touch at all because there's enormous stress on the base of the stone and they're old. And, uh, and a lot of them are just gonna snap off by themselves, I've seen enough of that, just from age.
And also, there's one other, I didn't realize, there's a gate there.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know that gate is stood open for.
Yeah.
I thought somebody opened to close it every day. Obviously they don't. The gate is open all night.
So we might consider adding to this, adding to the sign saying that there are hours, you know, from sunrise to dusk or something.
If we're not gonna close the gate.
Yeah.
And again, I mean, Mary, we understand that this is gonna be a sign and I hope people follow the sign. You're not gonna have somebody there watching. But at least it's, or maybe if we're not gonna close the door, people shouldn't be wandering out there at any moment in the night. But that's, we can put it on the bottom and sign with the hours on.
Well, you people can decide that and we can, as a board and commission, decide whether it's great. I mean, the sign itself is, Mary?
I just have input on, um, so I get, I mean, you know, there are good intentions of people cleaning them, but it's, it's not a good result in the long run. So I'm on board with that, except the whole issue with the dogs, I'm also on board with the exception of, I know the sign that you wanna say no dogs allowed, but I think you're gonna need, what do we use that term now? Companion dogs? Because a lot of people with mental health disorders have, it used to be just seeing eye dogs, but now a lot of anxiety disorders, post-traumatic stress there. And I don't wanna see a veteran not be able to take their companion dog into a cemetery.
Well, I don't know that, allowing dogs. This says to allow dogs, not to allow dogs to run free.
Oh, but I thought I just saw something else, no dogs allowed.
Those are some of the other signs, some examples.
Okay.
Mary, the last one, the example has.
This is the one.
I was asked to run free, so maybe that.
So another way to say that is pets must be on a leash and you must clean up after.
I mean, I would, if that's what you want, I would be okay with only companion dogs allowed, period.
We don't want dogs to use these tombstones like fire hydrants either.
Oh, oh, I agree. I mean, I thought we wanted to leave dogs, I mean, we have a, we have a lot of open space where.
Not necessarily, no, not necessarily. Because I know in North Cemetery, I've been told that people walk their dogs. Um, and, you know, if they're walking their dog on a leash on the road.
We're okay with that.
There's no problem with that.
Yeah, no, it just says, you know, refrain from allowing pets to run free and leave ways. Chase?
All right, I was hoping you guys could help me with this and I wanna tell you my concerns with it. The, I have absolutely, I agree with you a hundred percent on the night walking in there. I agree with you on the shaving cream and the oils. What I'm struggling with is a group of third graders under teacher's supervision going there to do a rubbing on the stone because to me, I almost feel like that's a way to honor the grave site.
We can get a stone, we can actually, there's actual stones you can get that are fake, they're not real. They look exactly, and that's what the kids can work on. And they can do the same thing.
I'm just struggling with that third grade. I, I, I agree with all other aspects, the shaving cream, everything.
Because the third grade curriculum is the whole common area. The houses, the historical aspects, the historical people in the cemetery, um, the different symbols on the stones and the stuff.
But they don't have to do the rubbing, that's the thing. They can teach about the symbols and the images. They can teach about the family relationships and the way, you know, people, um, respect their, um, people, you know, years ago when they died and hopefully respect them now. There are ways to teach peop, to teach the kids to do this and to, it doesn't have to be in the curriculum that they do gravestone rubbing.
And on the other side, what Bob, every year, spends money on.
Right.
You don't know how many years ago that was because people were rubbing that stone and now it's gotta be fixed.
What did you say, use a flashlight? I'm, I'm trying to see in your materials where you make a suggestion about a flashlight or?
You can, there, there are high, um, high frequency, or not high frequency, high.
Resolution.
Resolution, uh, flashlights that you can use. And there's digital programs, I've been told now, which is in some of that material.
Oh, there's all that, but I still, I see Chase's point because these children, and trust me, I taught there twenty-six years, and the classes loved the gravestone rubbings.
I think they, they need to be educated about the harm that causes.
Well, if, you know, they can be taught other ways. It'll be an adjustment, but I'm sure it can be handled. Priscilla?
Can't we just say, um, no applying any chemicals or powders for gravestone rubbing? In other words, reword it to say, not refrain from, but no rubbing, uh, no, um, application of chemicals or powders to gravestones. That that's prohibited. Because I, I agree with Chase, I agree with Mary. Um, look, look at these people who are here tonight. They're not fourth, they're not like sixth graders. They've been out of the elementary school for quite a while.
Yes, they have.
And they remembered this.
Yes, they do.
So to me, I mean, I don't see this as, as big of an issue. I agree with, I understand the piece on the, I definitely agree with the powder, I definitely agree they shouldn't put chemicals, I totally see that point. But the kids aren't gonna do that.
Right.
Kids are gonna have a piece of paper and a pencil and just lightly do it.
Okay, well, what they are also going to do is they're going to tape a paper to the stone and they're gonna apply pressure and they're gonna be rubbing, which is abrasive. Then when they take the pa, if, if the paper doesn't rip, if the paper rips, there goes the chalk and the, and the crayon or whatever they're using right on the stone. It, when they take the paper off, they pull the tape off, you can bet there's gonna be pieces of that stone on that tape.
Yeah, but the children, the children work in pairs, they don't tape. One holds it gently.
One can hold it.
Let me ask this, what, could, could we prohibit it but by special permission? And so we could have a waiver just for our grade school students? So, so it's kind of a compromise because I understand what you're saying about all those visitors coming in and then they're going and we don't know what they're doing at night.
We have examples.
But they could come in and we could educate the third grade teacher and they can get special permission. And so it's only our grade students.
It's the way Mary said, that somebody's holding it.
Yeah, and we could prohibit it unless by special permission of the selectmen. And then we will give them permission and then we'll educate them on how to do it properly. And then we'll leave out all the visitors that are, are just.
Gonna do it anyway.
Gonna do it anyway. But at least there's a sign that says, you know what, you're not allowed to do this. So if police happen to be there, I could say, you know what?
May I add to that? Because that, that's a good compromise solution. But I'd like to take it a step further, I suggest. Answer you, the, um, the third grade teachers are really not qualified in which stones are safe and not safe. Or which ones are in, in danger of falling apart or, or have been too badly damaged. Neither of the third graders, and they'll go, that one looks pretty, I wanna do that one, I wanna do the leaner, I wanna do whatever. A suggestion with this permission would be, and I would defer to Jim and his company.
Yes, I would like Jim to speak.
They would, um, we'd pick a selection of stones and flag them with a little orange flag and say, this is a safe stone. Because those stones can weigh hundreds of pounds, it goes on a third grader, now you gotta squish third grader. And they can snap and they do snap. And, and they do snap when they feel like it. You don't have to actually touch the thing for it to break if you're in the wrong place at the wrong time. So I would suggest, along with the permission thing, that certain stones are flagged by his company that says, this is a safe one, that's a safe one, this is a safe one.
I think that's a great compromise.
Okay, so we're gonna have to.
Jim, want to just, Jim, wanna say something?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, the, uh, the National Center for Preservation Technology and Training of the National Park Service recommends against gravestone rubbing for the very reasons we've discussed. You know, the, the popular ones get all the, all the action and these stones are, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty years old. They were carved by artisans who are, are renowned for their work. The Old Burial Ground is, is a classic and one of the finest in, in New England for gravestone carvers and the stones that they did. And the variety because in the, Sturbridge's location, sort of between east and west, brought in a number of carvers, both from the Connecticut River Valley and from the Boston area, from, uh, other areas around Boston. And, uh, the town really has a responsibility. I mean, it's, it's basically irreplaceable art objects, each one. And we can pick out some that look like they could take rubbing and that, you know, we can do that. The long-term effects, we don't know. You know, thirty years from now, are there chips that are gonna come off these stones that wouldn't have otherwise because they were rubbed every year? It becomes a real issue in terms of preserving irreplaceable art object.
I get it, but this is a compromise because it looks like the board is gonna maybe not put any kind of restriction, so I think.
We can identify a number of stones that are not delicate, they're not flaking and have a reasonable chance of surviving the rubbing of the third grader.
What we can do is, we need to vote on the article for the signs and we can come up with a policy.
Right.
Later. And the only thing we would have to change in the article is if you start it there next to the last line, at each of the entrances of the historic burial ground in North Cemetery to deter stone damage instead of rubbings, because we haven't determined the policy quite yet.
The data will be on the sign.
But stone damage.
That's good.
And then we can vote on the article as is. And then in our policy, we can be more specific.
I'll go with that.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then to place and support Article Eight?
With the changes to say deter stone rubbing, uh, stone damage. Yes, so moved.
Okay, Priscilla, is there a second?
Second.
Chase, any discussion? All in favor?
So somebody should just, Jeff, tell Finance as to why the language changed on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because then they may very often, it's not specific enough. They are more, and we're intentionally not specific because we wanna agree to the language on the, what the signs are gonna say. Bob?
I'd like to show you a sign that's in one of the nicest cemeteries in the town of Spencer. No dogs allowed. People have leashes that are not heavy chains, but they're chains. The person walking the dog could be elderly, most of the people that do are elderly. They've got the leash handled, but the chain can be fifteen feet long. They go one side of the stone, the dog goes the other. Now you have an abrasion on the stone where the chain went around the stone.
Well, we can put that in the policy.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
You know, this is just to get.
The money for it.
Town meeting for the money for the signs, you know. And, you know, we'll work on the poli, policy, this money doesn't go into effect, as you know, till July first. Okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Also, while you're here, Bob.
This can't be good, Bob. This is your life.
Getting reprimanded like a student.
No, I'm sure the rest of the board got the letter about the decoration day, May twenty-third.
It's in your mailbox.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay, um, it's a good ceremony. I went last year. I won't be able to go this year.
Okay.
Getting in the operations.
I would like a member of the board or our town administrator, if he would, say a few words.
The elementary school goes, they sing, they pledge, they put flags out and they put flowers out too.
So that you know, we're not changing the flags that are out there now for Memorial Day because they look in very good condition. The Lions Club has voted to support the effort in the Old Burial Ground. And come Veterans Day, they will pay to have all the flags replaced. And instead, on Memorial Day this year, the Thursday before, the twenty-third, two classes of sixth grade students will be bussed down and they will go out and place the flowers at the graves of sixty-five Revolutionary soldiers. Going back to Bill Bonsley and the work he did, we always thought, or I thought, there probably was forty Revolutionary War veterans, but he's proven through various means, ancestry.com, that we have sixty-five Revolutionary War veterans.
So if anyone can make it, you've got the letter in your mailbox.
I will try to go, May twenty-third.
Come on down. It's great to see these kids go out there and.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you all for coming in.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have Bob Laine, Community Preservation Committee, the Grand Trunk Trail Central Section Feasibility Study to see if the town will vote to appropriate the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Fund Balance the sum of sixteen thousand six-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the purpose of funding the Grand Trunk Trail Central Section Feasibility Study or take any action relative thereto. The, um, board's question, I believe, on this is what exactly? So could you all introduce yourself, please? And sir, could you take your hat off?
Sure.
Okay, Tom, we can stand with you?
Yep, let me just, let me get my page here, okay? Good evening, Tom Chamberlain, a member of the Associate Member of the Sturbridge Trails Committee. And as the other members speak, they'll introduce themselves. The feasibility study is. The feasibility study is the, as you know, the Grand Trunk Trail was a railbed line that ran through the town from east to west, basically following along the Quinnabog River. Now, sections of that trail still exist, most notably down in Westville, a little bit on the Riverlands, and what we've worked on at East Primfield Dam, the flood control dam. But through the central section of town, basically from the intersection of River and Farquhar Road, you know, going all the way to Stallion Hill Road at the Riverlands, the trail primarily has been eliminated either through, you know, the construction of Interstate 84, or travels through the village property. Matter of fact, the actual railbed is directly behind the meeting house on the village property. So, you know, recreating the trail back on that, those sections of the railbed are, you know, really not feasible at all. So what this study would do is to look at the existing road network and off to the sides of the roads to see where it might be feasible to build a rail trail. So this is purely just a feasibility study to determine some potential routes, and to identify, you know, I think, a big picture cost, and, but, but also, you know, what is behind those costs. We know it's in flood control land, we know we may need to partner with Old Sturbridge Village, we know we will need to talk to Mass Highway if we use the flyover over 84. So there's, you know, there's a number of private property owners, and, and state agencies, and federal agencies, and we really have no plan to, to take a look at. So that's what this study would do, is create the plan. So we did go out to bid, we got, you know, and this particular quote here is, is from the lower bid, low bidder. And so that's the amount that we're requesting, based on, on that estimate. We did apply for a Mass Trails grant to cover approximately 80% of this cost, because those grants are 80/20 match, and we're hopeful we will get it. But we won't know until sometime after the town meeting into next fiscal year. So, in our discussions with the Community Preservation Committee, we are asking for the full amount, so if we don't get the grant, we can still move forward with the study. However, if we get the grant, we're only gonna need approximately $4,650 of that as part of the grant match, and so the rest of the money would be returned to the Community Preservation Fund Balance if, if we get the grant.
Okay, questions from the board? Any other input from the Trails Committee?
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear ya.
Oh, any other input from the Trails Committee members?
Rich Paradise, Associate Member, Tom says this a lot better than we do.
But the Trails Committee is on board, right?
Oh, absolutely.
The CPC, yes, right.
Yeah, that's why we're here.
And the CPC voted 5-0 as well, for the study's money.
Well, Rich, I have to tell you, that's because Tom talks more than you guys.
We let him do what he's good at.
Any questions, Priscilla?
Finance do, do we know?
They, they voted to put it on, they supported it.
Was it seven to zero? Do you know?
I don't know, their numbers fluctuate.
All right, with attendance.
Depending on Tuesday or Thursday.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, is, is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we place and support Article 9, Community Preservation Committee, Grand Trunk Trail Central Section Feasibility Design Study.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discuss— discussion?
All in favor?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, is there a motion now to, we, do we have anything else on that?
Mary, one more, to your right.
Yeah, no, I hear him, but—
Okay, there is one more article to, to discuss. It's not on the agenda, but the attorney brought up an issue with Article 35. We need to specify the numbers, number of members on the Commission on Disability, anywhere between five to 13 members.
I say we start, I say we start small, we have difficulty filling our committees anyway. I can't imagine 13 people.
No.
So I'll make a motion that we amend Article 15, Established Commission on Disability.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
What did I say?
Fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Article 35, to add the language to consist of a five-member commission.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now, is there a motion to close the warrant to the annual town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, see you all.
Mary, we, we did ask to have one other topic tonight for discussion. It, it wasn't related to the annual town warrant, but it's related to the Riverlands.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Tom.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's okay, we closed that.
Yeah, no, it's right, yeah.
It's number 10 on the agenda.
First things first, right?
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, I believe you were some, sent some copies, digital files. What I brought up here is the plan. We're getting ready to build the first phase of the trails on the Riverlands and the parking lot, which is adjacent to the sheds that we've been building, directly across the street from the main parking lot to Old Sturbridge Village. That's the road down along here, and this is the parking lot area, and this is the area where our sheds currently are located. What we discovered in developing this plan was the conservation restriction on the property limits the size of this parking lot to 20 cars and two horse trailer slots. The Trail Committee feels that that's on the small side for the potential use of this property, and the master plan of trails, that this is like right in the center of everything we got going on, on our open space properties. The CR allows for 10-car parking spots on Holland Road, which is, as you know, the Riverlands goes from Stallion Hill all the way across to Holland Road. The Trail Committee would like to ask that you consider allocating seven of those spots to be put into this lot for a total of 27 car parking and two trailers, and allowing us to have just the three spots on the Holland Road. And the reason we're asking for that shift is Holland Road already, already has parking along the edge of the road there on the town right-of-way, not on the property, but in the street right-of-way, for approximately six cars. And then across the street, we have room for another, already an existing parking lot with the Grand Trunk Trail, six cars. So we think, you know, on that end, there's, there's adequate space for people to park that wanna use that area of the trail, but this would be much more of a central location, and people would be using this parking lot a lot more frequently. Not sure of the process that this may need to take, but we're here tonight to start with the selectmen. Obviously, the Riverlands is under your care, custody, and control. So if you, you know, rule and vote in favor of this, I think then the request would at least go to Opakam Land Trust for their comment and, you know, review. Whether it can be approved at their level or not, or needs to be bumped up to the state, I don't know. But obviously, it starts with you folks first, to saying, yeah, this is what we'd like to do.
Jeff, do you think it would have to be town council's input first, seeing it's got a restriction on it?
Yeah, you'd really need to get the town attorney to look at this and maybe map out what has to happen to make this work. But I think, you know, I, I kind of agree with Tom. If there's a consensus that this is satisfactory to the board, we can start that process.
Well, I'll give my two cents. I think it sounds very reasonable, and I would defer to the Trails Committee in knowing how, you know, who's using what trails, and whether there's adequate space or not, because you're really just changing seven parking spots. And then, of course, council would have to say what we need to do to amend the CR, but the first question is always gonna be, are we even on board to start the process? So, I mean, I don't personally have a problem with it.
For some reason, this is the only CR that has a parking lot size restriction to it. None of our other CRs do. I don't know how, that was something the board felt was appropriate at the time, or, you know, again, you know, I just, it's interesting.
Well, we didn't, we didn't draft the language of the CRs. I mean, we did approve it, so, but we're not the ones that initially drafted the content.
Right, but the other, the other thing, just so you know, this CR does allow for this use, and the restriction of the footprint is one acre. And we've calculated, you know, all of the, the parking lot, the driveway, the sheds, et cetera, and we're just under three-quarters of an acre of disturbed area. So, that part of the CR that says we can't use more than an acre, we're, we're well under that limit. We're not even, you know, that close, when, you know, three-quarters to an acre, we still got a quarter.
Okay, Priscilla, any questions? Chase? Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion?
It was, it didn't have anything to do with the area that has some contamination that we didn't wanna dig up, right?
Not that I'm—
That's in a whole nother thought, right.
The opposite end of the needs, yeah.
That's what I thought, too, okay. I'll make a motion that we support the Trails Committee's request to start the process to amend the CR on Riverlands to accommodate 27 parking spots.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Okay, and then the final item, again, related to this that I'm just flipping over is this part right here, so it's just a little bit larger of a blow-up. The proposed Grand Trunk Trail route, at some point, needs to come down Stallion Hill Road from somewhere, the intersection with the Old Sturbridge Village access road. Again, that's the whole feasibility study, you know, how are we gonna bring it out and around and all that? So we're envisioning that it will be coming down Stallion Hill Road. As the board may recall, there is already an existing sidewalk along one side of Stallion Hill Road. However, it ends, the terminus of the sidewalk is back here at the driveway to Old Sturbridge Village. So, from there to, you know, the driveway of the Riverlands, we'd need to be constructing something there of a sidewalk. The Trails Committee feels that reducing the sidewalk on Stallion Hill Road and getting the trail back into the woods is something that is worth pursuing. However, there is a piece of land that we'd like to use for the trail is owned by Old Sturbridge Village. So the last, one of the CPC articles and the request is to put forth a request to Old Sturbridge Village to obtain a trail easement from them on the piece of property that they own adjacent to the Riverland, so we can get the trail off of Stallion Hill Road quicker than continuing down to the actual front edge that we own on Stallion Hill Road. Now, the trail itself would be located on the gas pipeline right-of-way, so it's very minimal, you know, there's no tree cutting. You know, all we're gonna need to do is just remove the live, organic material, the grass, and, and, you know, the, the top layer of duff, put down a fabric, soil fabric, and then just put the gravel over, over that for the trail. It's very minimal construction costs, very minimal environmental, you know, disturbance, what have you, no real soil digging or excavating or anything like that. But we thought by getting it off the road into the woods as quickly as possible would be a better trail experience overall, and, and be cheaper to the town in the long run than the more sidewalk along Stallion Hill Road.
Yeah, we had already voted on that article.
Okay, again, I just wanted to make sure we were, we were good.
We voted four to nothing, somebody was absent. Okay?
Okay.
You didn't even have to go through all that, but you know what, it sounded good.
Thank you.
It's clearer than just a warrant article. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Maps, too many lines. You gotta color code those things.
Yeah.
With maps, just a little.
Uh, I'll work on it.
Okay, next we have Mr. Mocelli. Well, it's certainly not the pay.
My name is Matt Mocelli, and as you know, I'm a member of the Sturbridge Housing Partnership Committee, which is chaired by Ed Neal. I have the responsibility to oversee the progress of the Five Leaves Project on behalf of our committee. Since my last report to this board on March 4th of this year, the Honorable Michael Supranaut and I met with the developers, that's NBM Realty, on March 20th. Juvuban, our town planner, of course, was unable to attend due to illness. There was a clarifying meeting, which lasted well over an hour. In the end, it was agreed, the one obstacle to moving ahead with the project is the, pardon, $900,000 budget shortfall created by, I believe, the need for individual water metering to each apartment, rather than to each building. As you well know, the state requires us to have 10% of our dwellings be categorized as affordable housing. If I recall correctly what Mr. Supranaut explained at the meeting, is when Sturbridge reaches 10%, we become eligible for considerable grants. I was hoping he would be here to explain that, but I think he mentioned a figure of $250,000 for one of the grants, but that needs to be clarified. The $17 million Five Leaves Projects, project brings us much closer to the 10% that's required. I think we're at 5.6 now. The main reason I'm here tonight is to ask that a coordinated effort be made to find a way to manage the shortfall. I would gladly offer, excuse me, my services in working toward that end. Now, what kind of shape that would take is something that needs to be determined. But the last thing I heard or know, have knowledge of regarding the project happened on March 20th. So there's been, again, to my knowledge, nothing has happened between then and now, and we could have had things underway, things done, gotten to answers if there had been a steady flow of effort put into it. And that's what I'm proposing, is that we set it up, so we get some regular effort into the project.
Okay, I just wanna clarify a few points. I was not at the last meeting when you were here.
Sure.
And I had gotten a letter from Mr. Neal that they really hadn't appointed a representative to come to us to discuss it. But in the meantime, I did get another one from Mr. Neal, and he did say that Mr. Mocelli has the vote of that committee to speak. I just wanted to clarify that, because, okay, there's been no concerted effort, because it's kind of a, it's a predicament. The town's done what they can. The ball is really in the developer's court. On their permit, they're gonna have to ask for an extension on their permit, because it runs out at the end of May. So, the one to speak to on getting anything done would be the town planner. She knows the ins and outs. But I do know that, I personally was surprised from day one that the developer did not take into account the cost of water and sewer. I mean, that absolutely astounds me, you know? And the town has never paid for water and sewer for private developments. And I don't think the town is about to, so—
I'm not suggesting that, ma'am.
And, you know, as far as grants, it's always wonderful. There's always these grants out there, until you go to apply for them, and all of a sudden— a sudden, there's not grants. Maybe, you know, if Mr. Supernot or if you want to, you know, get in touch with the state, see, are there any grants out there to help these people? Because, you know, cooperation's fine, but I'm not sure there's a whole lot the town can do at the moment.
Yeah.
Other than guide you.
I don't think this is something that, a responsibility that the town should take on beyond coordinating an effort to determine whether or not this can be worked through with the developer, to come up with a means that doesn't cost the town anything. I mean, there are creative approaches to doing financing, as I'm confident you're aware, and that has not been explored here.
No, it hasn't, because it's really, it's nice, as I said, cooperation is nice, but it's really not up to the town to go forward. The developer can certainly use the offices to get information and move forward, but it's not up to our planning department to go out and seek all this.
Gotcha.
But, you know, Mr. Supernot seems more than willing to get information for you, but it needs to be specific, you know? The grants are great, but we were hoping for a grant for the senior center, and then we had a state senator and state rep come in, and there is no money for senior centers.
Well, I recognize the error of my ways in mentioning grants at all, because this is just an aside. We're still dealing with the, it sounds like you have a clear focus as to what you want and not want to do, and I don't want to be here.
Well, that's just my personal opinion, I mean, based on made things up.
Okay, well, if I may, I'll give you my personal opinion. I think that there's a good chance, if we explore creative financing, that there's a fair to good chance that we can come up with a means that satisfies everybody, or comes close to that, anyway. The $900,000 shortfall is less than 6% of the total project cost of roughly 17 million. And when you think of it in that, in those terms, you know, it's more manageable. And one of the advantageous things about this 40B project, which this is, is that the developer is limited to a 20% profit. Now, that $900,000 takes away about 25% of his profit, so it's, you know, it's important, but yet it's still 6% of the overall cost of the project. So in my thinking, that makes it a little more manageable, it's just something to work with. I could be wrong. But again, I think that this really needs to be gone into. I mean, Mr. Supernot is a busy man. I have a challenging time getting in touch with him, and I'm not being critical, it's just a matter of fact.
Oh, no, but maybe the Housing Partnership, as a partnership, should work on this.
Well, that's why I'm here.
If you feel that strongly on it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I can only...
Jeff? Oh, Jeff, you hand up?
I did. I would like an opportunity, I've not had a chance to get into this project or meet with the developer, to see what can be done and see if there is an ask. I agree wholeheartedly that the other utility users should not suffer the financial impact of this oversight of this developer, but there may be tools in the toolbox we can use if this is a project the town sees beneficial.
You know, I've been, I'm a volunteer. I've been volunteering on behalf of those in need for well over 30 years, and that's what's motivating me. The only reason I'm here is because I believe we need affordable housing. Ironically, I drive home from visiting my family in Connecticut yesterday, public radio was doing an article on the need for affordable housing in Massachusetts, and it's dire. There are details, yeah, I mean, it's, I can start quoting figures, but that would only be boring at this late hour, I think. But there is suffice to say that there is a dire need, and that's what's propelling me. I just want very much to see this project go ahead, so we can have some badly needed affordable housing. That's my only interest in all of this.
Right, no, and the Housing Partnership is the group that should be working on it.
Well, with respect, ma'am, that's why I'm here.
And you can certainly ask people to direct you where to go. Like Jeff said, he's unfamiliar with this, so maybe, you know, Jeff can get up to speed and see if there's...
That's a lot.
As he says, tools in the toolbox.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges, for your willingness to do that, and...
I just wanted to support something our chair said in terms of the impetus, the desire, the driving force should be the developer, you know, seeking out our town administrator in terms of finding a creative way to fund the utilities. And I think it's great that you've come forward, but I really view that as should also be the role of the developer. But I do realize that we have a need in Sturbridge for more affordable housing, so I definitely would support using our town administrator's time and efforts to get more up to speed on the project. But again, the desire also has to come from this developer to show as much enthusiasm for thinking out of the box as you are, as the volunteer coming forward to us.
Sure.
You know, that's what I'm thinking.
I think that's a very fair thought. One of the things I bring to the table is a distant relationship to a pit bull, and I just don't like to let things fall or die, and if I want to fight hard for this, and that means working with the developer to whatever it takes. It doesn't matter to me, yeah, it's his responsibility, their responsibility, it's our responsibility, I want to see the project go ahead and provide the affordable housing. That's my only, very narrowly focused. I don't want to put the responsibility on anyone necessarily, but I just want to see it go ahead.
I get it, I get it. But the developer has to be as equally on board as you. That's my only thought.
I'm with you 100%, and that's part of, one of the things I would do.
Okay, so I think Jeff will find out what he can.
You've given me an awful lot of your time. I'm extremely grateful, thank you.
Of course, thank you for waiting till the end.
We had to wait long enough.
Well, the stamina, I guess it's in there.
Okay, thank you for coming in. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old business. Priscilla?
Nope.
Chase?
You know, I just wanted to talk on camera, the four of us here, none of us were in support of marijuana in coming to Sturbridge, but I felt the presentations tonight, they were all very positive. I feel like they want to work with the town, they were all very clean-cut people, and I walk away feeling a little bit better about the situation and have to listen to the presentations tonight.
Okay, good words. Mary, old?
This is kind of really old business, but, so a year, it's been on, I've been meaning to bring it up, but talking about Memorial Day Parade and everything triggered it again. We voted in last year the appropriation to put up flags on our historic area in our town con, and remember that was, and we have the money, and I think the flags were ordered as part of last year's budget. So, because I know when we had our other facilities manager, she had said, oh, we're ordering these flags, and I'm just wondering about the status on that. The money's already been taken care of in fiscal year '19, I believe. That was one of the things I had wanted, because other towns, from Memorial Day even to Veterans Day, you go through the towns and they have a lot of flags up to commemorate the holidays, and we don't, and we have a beautiful, and at one point, we had flags, but we did get the money. I don't remember, I think it came from Betterment.
No, people donated.
Oh, is that how it went?
You mean the original flags?
Yes, but last year, it was part of the Betterment, and I think the flags were ordered, and hopefully, somebody can put them up time for Memorial Day.
Which is coming.
Which is, well, yeah, maybe not now, maybe 4th of July, but at least to know what's going on with that.
I'll find out.
Okay, I have no old. New, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
I have two new. The first new, I wanted to give everyone an update, because I hear a lot about Panera Bread walking through the town hall and walking through the town, and I want to kind of give everybody a little update. As of Friday afternoon, the national grid dropped off the transformer. Electricity should be turned on very shortly, and there's about two weeks of testing ovens and testing equipment, and then it's going to be looking like an opening very shortly. So if everybody can just hang on for a little bit longer, they will be open.
And then when that's on Facebook, we'll get all these other requests for the second spot.
That's right.
I want this.
That's right. Second new, I'd ask for the board's support. I'd like to make a motion tonight authorizing our town administrator, Jeff Bridges, to contact the state about doing plantings in the islands around the lights in Sturbridge.
I'm going to second it. Did you just make the motion?
Yeah.
I'm going to second it, because that's something I've wanted for a long time.
Which lights?
Brought it up a few times.
20 and 131.
I was actually...
The islands.
I was actually hoping maybe even me, Mary, and Jeff could get together and go for a quick ride, and I could show you, we could maybe talk, the three of us.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, cool.
And patch the hole on 131.
Patch the hole on 131 while we're at it.
That was a motion to be all vote.
Which one? I know, I know. Fatwa Road comes first. Yeah, you're right. Okay, any more discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, four to nothing. Okay, I have no new correspondence. Mary?
Yep.
Correspondence dated April 29th from the last Green Valley, Valley, an invitation to an annual meeting. April 29th, Department of Environmental Protection, Southbridge Sanitary Landfill, I have a question on that. April 30th, Arbor Day Foundation, congratulations, letter to Sturbridge. May 2nd, Community Food Collaborative, a newsletter. A May 2nd letter from a resident concerning the town tennis courts. And May 2, Sturbridge Fire Department, a letter of recognition to Steve Joyce. I also have, it was kind of oral, I guess it was a correspondence, but a couple residents wanted to commend the dog, not dispatcher, but the dog safety officer, the dog officer.
Animal control officer.
Thank you, that's what I couldn't think of. Animal control officer for going above and beyond her normal duties, including finding homes for the strays that she finds. So I did tell them to, like, actually write to us, and so that we could formally, which they haven't done yet, so I'm just going to give a shout out.
Yeah, because we can forward it then to the chief who...
Right. Okay, so that, and I just had a question about the Southbridge Sanitary Landfill, that's like a provisional permit, I thought? That was closing, or, I guess I need this permit explained to me.
I can get some more information.
Okay.
Yeah, because it pops up every now and then, and...
Yeah. It's another site assessment, and I was just wondering, are they trying to expand it? I guess I don't know, so...
Aren't there two different sites?
Yeah.
The land, I think there are two different sites. I think that's on Barefoot Road, if I'm not mistaken, the landfill.
This refers to Barefoot Road.
Yeah, and then I think the land, the other part of that is on, at the airport. I forget the road.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, they're saying the mailing address is 165 Barefoot Road. So I guess just more...
The facility is also on Barefoot Road.
Yeah, just a silly address.
Yeah, but it doesn't hurt to clarify it.
No.
Okay, and, Janae, did you pass on that letter from the concerned citizen about the tennis courts to the rec?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It was also to her.
Yeah, I didn't see that it was, because, can't please everyone.
Pickleball.
Pickleball. I'll tell you, that's gone wild.
Yeah, it's very popular.
They love it.
Okay, correspondence, I read Bob's. Okay, approval of minutes? In the agenda, it says April 19th, but it's really April 18th, which you have on the minutes. That's okay. Okay, does anybody have any corrections, additions?
I just had one addition. On page three, M. Dowling suggested that the rec Cedar Street article should go to, and all other, and all the other calls for Cedar should wait until the Fall Special Town Meeting.
Which minutes are these?
Are we on...
The 18th.
18.
Okay, sorry, what page?
Three.
Three, right in the middle, where I said it should wait until the Fall Special Town Meeting, pending, pending appropriate input from a architect.
Okay, anyone else have anything else? Okay, motion to approve is amended, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Four to nothing. Okay, minutes of April 30th. I had sent in a few, and it was all because of spell check. Puts the words that you don't want. Okay, does anyone else have any corrections, additions, deletions? Okay, is there a motion then to approve the minutes of April 30th?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, 301.
301, one extension.
Oh, I wasn't here.
Yeah, she was teaching.
Yeah. I was working. Before the last motion, the next meeting is on the 20th, correct?
Yes.
I won't be here, I'm part of a concert Byzantine Choir in Brookline, so I won't be here that night. Sorry.
We keep waiting for full board, so we can reorganize.
You can reorganize without me. I'll give you my thoughts, if that works. I can email you my thoughts and go with it, whatever you want. It's up to you.
But, I mean, you can give us your thoughts, you just can't vote.
Right, but, yeah, right, you're right. That's why we don't have remote vote, but...
So it's up to you.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
It's fine with me, because I know you got to get it going, so...
Yeah, and state's waiting for, after elections and stuff, state always waits for updates, particularly on select boards.
I'm okay if you want to, oh, yeah, Mike's not here, so you might want to wait for him, but, you know.
Yeah, we didn't put it on the agenda anyway, so, so we'll put it on the agenda for the 20th.
Where do we go with the marijuana now? How many, it's not our next meeting we decide?
Oh, no, no, they've got a lot to do with clearing up, and we've got to get reports back, and, Jeff?
I think at one point, you have a special meeting.
Yeah.
And just talk about marijuana, have the town council here.
Yeah.
Talk about the construct of a host community agreement, talk about HEAL and lifting their moratorium, kind of package it. When we get all the information, the staff, all the questions, we'll give you packets on each one.
Right.
Maps, diagrams, info.
Yeah, it'll be...
When they can open, one of the things we're running into, as you heard this evening, is the availability of the product seems to be, you know, an issue, right? So, and I don't know if that's going to weigh on your decision, who can be ready to go sooner than others, or is it just about, you know, each individual with or without the expeditious delivery of the product? So all those factors will be put on paper and discussed at a special meeting.
And I'd be interested, and I'm sure this will come up, is what exactly can be contained in a host agreement? Because I know there's some controversy surrounding what towns are asking for in terms of sweetening the pot, and I want to know what's appropriate boundaries and what's not appropriate.
Exactly, exactly.
This is news. Rain expected in Sturbridge tomorrow.
We had our sunshine for the month today.
Wednesday, I think, is the only nice day going to be this week, I think it's Wednesday.
Yeah, okay, there's no public, so...
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? So we beat it, Priscilla.
We did, we did win, Mary.
I have a question for you. On the American Legion Memorial Day.